I'd like to call this meeting of the Willet City Council, December 11th, 2019, to order. And, Suprina, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge and lead to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our goal.
Roll call?
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Bobby Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
And Fritzel?
Here. All right. Public communication. Council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, if there are any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. However, no action will be taken because it's not agendized, so. All right, at this point, do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak?
And Mayor, may I request of the council that we hear from the fire departments during items not on the agenda and that we allow him to go beyond the three-minute limit if it pertains, if he needs to respond to any public comment.
Oh, yeah. Right. Would anybody from the public like to speak? You could come forward and state your name to the record.
A non-agenda person.
Yeah, he would be responding. His time would be extended.
Basically, he's going to be speaking at our public comment, but allowed to be speaking for up to 30 minutes because of a pertinent emergency item. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Diana Hosford. My mom, Joan Davis, died on December 2nd. She was taken to Howard Hospital, which is a wonderful hospital. We're really fortunate to have that. The issue we encountered at the time, she went to the hospital at 2:30. They worked with a cardiologist in Santa Rosa. She was approved to go to transport at 5:40. They were able to keep her stable. The ambulance arrived at 10 o'clock at night. She wasn't able to leave until 11 o'clock, in which they, the staff did wonderful at Howard. Reach helicopter nurses came down, along with the pilot, to help as much as they could to get her transported. They left at 11 o'clock from Howard, and on their way down, she went into cardiac arrest on her way through Ukiah. They were able to stop, divert her to Ukiah, and after 20 minutes, they were able to bring her back. Once she was stable, they continued on to Santa Rosa to set her hospital. Once she got there, she went into cardiac arrest again. My brothers and Paul, my husband, myself, were there waiting. She went into cardiac arrest, going to the hospital, so they came to get us. They called us so we could see what was going on. We watched for a short amount of time, and my mom wouldn't want that. It was really horrible. My concern tonight is, we have issues in Mendocino County with our ambulances. We don't have enough to support the 60,000 people that we have. My understanding is on December 1st, Falk, the second ambulance pulled out. So that left us only with MedStar. At the time, they said that we had two ambulances available. But the problem was, two ambulances available for 911. For critical care transport, there was nobody to take her down there. We had to watch, along with the Howard staff, while they kept my mother stable, because we didn't have anybody to take her down there. We have an issue, and I'm asking you, we went to the Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday, we're asking you, or asking the community, to step up. What can we do to make this not happen to another family? So I don't know what we can do as a city, if we can get involved. I just don't want it to happen to anybody else. You don't want to lose your mother, or your father, or your daughter, or your granddaughter, or your aunt, or your uncle. I'm just asking that we stand up as a community and do all that we can to not let this happen to somebody else. Thank you.
Just wanted to hit on a few things, and the fact is that the changes that have happened over the years, I can tell you that, and I've said it before, you know, top to bottom, it feels good now about the city, right on down, from top to bottom. It's as good as I've seen it ever. It's been, it's really encouraging. Going through these times as a businessperson and as a community member, and we've seen a lot of changes. Over the last 30 years on Main Street, I've seen a lot of changes. A lot of them have happened in the last three and four years. Some might argue, good or bad, but, you know, we look in the rearview mirror and say, hey, you know, the future's bright here, and I believe that. I truly believe that. I've seen so many people step up to the plate over the last, you know, several years, people putting a lot of money into their buildings, and time, and love, and energy, and I think there are countless examples up and down the street. And people are really stepping up in difficult times, and at times when, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty. Again, you know, we're on our way to it. You know, I believe that, and I believe that. But the one issue that I would like to address tonight is that, you know, we, there is still that issue of blighted buildings. And I know that there is work being done on that, to try to improve that, and I would look forward to and encourage the city to keep the momentum going on that. You know, in the past, there has been nothing done, and the last couple of years, there's been a movement to making something happen, and that's really encouraging, and it's a positive, you know, it's a positive love going forward. So that's what I'd like to say, is just that, you know, keep up good work, and, you know, everybody's, you know, put your best foot forward, and let's get these absentee owners to do something with their bodies. And if they don't care about the community, then, you know, what we do. And so it's time to get them to move on, or to step up to the plate. So anyway, good job. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Joan Davis is my aunt, but I'm just here to offer that we all need to support Paul and Diana's effort to make knowledgeable what happened that was wrong, and ask everybody, both personally and professionally, to do whatever they can do, both to support, wanting to have that not occur again. And they're just trying to get everybody to know what happened, so they can think about it and do something about it if they're able to, not that the city council has any particular power to do something about it, the city council, but it's just good for you to have that knowledge.
My mom, Joan Davis, as you've heard, actually Diana and Mike spoke quite well about what I wanted to say. We really need the support of the community. We need support from all of you to talk with our supervisors. We can all pull strings. We can talk to the EMS community. They are very willing to hear what we have to say with what needs to be done in our community. It's not only Mendocino County, it's all five districts that need to, we all need help with what's happening with the ambulance service. It's a difficult process that, it's a circle, actually, and I don't know exactly how all of it works. I've learned quite a bit in the last five days. My thoughts were one thing, and they're actually something else. When ambulances are at a stage two, we don't have service for transport. We certainly always need to have transport for emergency 911 services, but when we take our loved ones to Howard, which is, the staff there is wonderful. It's a great hospital, that was spent millions of dollars on Howard Hospital, to be there and to support our community. The issue is, if you have a family member that needs to be transported, and they're at level two, there's no transport for you. And to wait for the hours that Mom waited, it's very difficult to put yourself through. So if you all could talk to our supervisors, EMS, see what we can do as a community, I would highly appreciate it. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
My name's Christine Griggs. Joanie was a friend, and I married into the family and became really close to her. The efforts that were made by the staff at the hospital were phenomenal, and I was heard, I was unable to be at the Board of Supervisors meeting, but I was told that one supervisor or someone made a comment that there was indeed an ambulance available, and they didn't understand why we had that problem. Well, I was there, but there were a lot of people there, so I was in the hall, and I observed these nurses and doctors calling place after place. They called Sacramento, they called Sonoma County, they called the Coast, they were working with Ukiah. They were reaching out to everyone, and so I was stunned that somebody out there in a position of power feels there was an ambulance available, and what's that about? So I just really want to emphasize how hard they tried, because I was there listening. You can't help it, they were right by the nurses' station, and they were really upset, and coming in and reporting, I think we got one, oh, no, we don't, you know, and it was like grueling and heartbreaking. So, I don't know, I'd like to know about that ambulance, just because it seems almost impossible that that's true, so.
Chief Wilks, would you like to come up?
Yes, probably perfect time, actually. Mayor and councilors, thanks for having me, and thank you for giving me some extra time. We take a lot of heat, too, on the fire service. I have Chief Norrie from up in Burke Trail here with me today, because we work as a partnership to provide EMS locally. And so we talk about this literally day by day, and the situation that we're in. My goal here tonight is not to talk about money, it's not to talk about funding, it's to talk about where we are, the way the ambulance system works. I'm going to use one scenario. It took me an hour and a half to, hour and 45 minutes last night at our board meeting to get through this. I'm going to scale it back to a half hour, so if I'm going too fast, slow me down. But I think that we need to understand where we are, what levels mean, as has been spoken by the Hosford family, and I'm going to shed some light on. Now, what I'm going to give you guys is, out of the system status management plan, this fact, it's how we run EMS in this county. It's the rules that we run by, it's how things are dispatched. I can't speak to exactly how things work at the hospital, but I can tell you how ambulances are dispatched, and when they're put in play, and how they're put in play. So I'm going to, I'm going to use the whiteboard to explain it, because I think that when I can write it down, you'll see, you'll see better function to it, you'll see how it functions and the situations that we get in in our community. So bear with me as we go through. Right now, on any given day, you have four ambulances, and when we talk, let me say Mendocino County, I want to be clear, we're talking about the central corridor, we're talking about ambulance service. We're talking about 101 from Hawthorne to Laytonville. Okay, Laytonville has an ambulance district, they provide their own ambulance to their folks, they have their own ambulance area, their own 911 ambulance there, ALS. So, and any given day, in Willet's...
And the Coast has their own district as well?
What's that?
The Coast has their own?
Yes, the Coast has their own situation going on there. This is all central corridor. Willet's, we have what they call Medic 9150. Redwood Valley, this is, this would be a normal day, if all the ambulances are sitting there, waiting, ready to go. They have Medic 9112. Ukiah has to, Medic 9111, and Ukiah also has, in the case of the day that I'm talking about, their medic then was 9116.
Chris, as part of your explanation, I think a lot of folks think it's the fire departments that coordinate this, but in reality, maybe you can explain as part of your...
Yeah, we're not a transporting agency. We don't have an ambulance, we have, we're a volunteer fire department, the EMTs, we show up and assist where we can, and go to as many medical calls that we're required to go to, or get called to go to, depending on how their triage and dispatch. But in Mendocino County, inland Mendocino County, that we're talking about for this, is this, these are private ambulance companies. Okay, these are third-party private ambulance companies that are, they're for-profit businesses that are trying to make, they, they have to make a profit in order to keep doing business. They're not taxpayer-funded, and they're not, it's not a taxpayer-funded ambulance service. Okay, so it's important to note that. So Willet's is considered to be a primary posting location, and so is Ukiah, meaning those two places are where, if they can have it their way, that's where they're going to post ambulances. We're at level two right now, and we'll get into that in just a minute. So Willet's is primary posting, Ukiah's primary posting location. Because we have four ambulances, that's considered to be level four. If this were how it is, that's level four. That's, that's as good as we can be in the central corridor right now. One of these ambulances goes away, then we become level three. I'm going to explain the levels first, and I'll go into the scenario. We become level three.
When you say go away, do you leave there?
Transfer, or medical aid. Let's say Medic 9150 has to go on a medical aid right now, and they're unavailable for another call, you're at level three. There's three ambulances available.
Are those all one company, or are they different?
All one company. MedStar's the only company. I want to say, too, that MedStar, the company that's here right now, they are fighting hard to provide for more ambulance service. They have logistical struggles, they're trying to find paramedics. Our county does not have a paramedic program anymore. We're working on getting that done, through, trying to push the college that direction. As we speak, we wrote letters today to the college to try to push for a paramedic...
And MedStar was here before in Willet's, and actually did us solid by posting an ambulance here, but they were kind of squeezed out as part of this process.
They're doing everything they can do to gain more ambulances and more paramedics to make this function work. But it's important to know where we're at right now. Regardless of the fact of how hard we're trying, we need to know where we're at right now, because things are happening today. Ambulance goes away, you're at level three. Another one gets a call, or goes on what we call a transfer, interfacility transfer, that's what you're...
What we needed.
What she needed was an interfacility transfer for primary care to, to another primary care facility, right, for special reasons, a heart condition, or any other number of special reasons. If the ambulance goes away, then you're at level two. Level two, there's a great trigger point at level two. Level two means there's only two ambulances available. They're supposed to be posted in Willet's and one in Ukiah. That's to serve 60,000 people, roughly. Those numbers come from Municipal Services Review from LAFCO on the size of the districts. Okay? There's two ambulances available. At that time, normal, and I'm going to be clear in the room, normal transfers, regular transfers, do not go at level two. You can't do transfers. But there is criteria that hospitals can make a staff, what they call a staff transfer, which is considered to be a 911 response, and they can, all the way down to level zero, they can take an ambulance and use it, regardless of the level, if it's called a staff transfer. System Status Management Plan calls for that, very clearly. Level one is just what it sounds like, one ambulance left. When that happens, an ambulance gets posted in Redwood Valley to cover all 60,000 people. We were at level one three times today? I think at least, at least, three times today. Okay, and then you can get down to level zero. It sounds like that can't happen, but guess what? It happens almost every night, at some point, while we're all sleeping, we're down to level zero. The other day, this is a scenario that we're going to talk about, and I'll explain how we get there, we were actually at what they call negative two. In other words, Laytonville ambulance, that they have a taxpayer base, that they have, that they're serving in Laytonville, they leave their tax base and post at Long Vale to serve Willet's. And then Ukiah Fire has two paramedic engine companies, not on ambulances, they're on fire trucks. We'll take one of their fire truck engine companies, place that engine company on an ambulance, and become an ambulance for Ukiah. They don't normally do that, they don't like to do that, it's not what they're there for, but they will do it to serve their community. So that's how you can end up at negative, level negative two. We were there last week in the scenario that I'm going to, that I'm going to give you here in just a minute. Are the levels clear to council? Okay, how we get there, and then, and understanding of level two, so just a normal transfer, like if they needed to get transferred out for BLS reasons, you can't get a BLS transfer, basic life support transfer at level two.
Good question. You said that there's a trigger point at level two, is that when the Laytonville ambulance gets called down to Long Vale?
Level zero.
That's at level zero only.
That trigger point for Laytonville ambulance, and for, which is ambulance 5120, right here on the side, and Ukiah's is 6821, I believe, those don't come into play until you're at level zero. It's not their mission, you know, they're, they're just trying to provide service when there's nothing left, literally nothing left. Okay, so we're going to go, I'm going to go to the scenario and kind of give you what happened on December 4th, right here in Willet's, and then we can ask questions, if anybody needs to answer any questions. It's easier for me to kind of draw this out. All right. So it was about midday, we knew we were at level one, because we got a call to the Pepperwood Motel for a diabetic emergency. The patient at the Pepperwood needed, it's not called the Pepperwood, it's called the Redwood Inn. The Redwood Inn needed a, they needed ALS intervention for a diabetic emergency. And so we get, we get called, our ambulance is in Redwood Valley. That tells me that we're at level one, right? So we're at level one, the ambulance is 20 minutes away in Redwood Valley. That's where 9150 is, it was known in Willet's. That bothered me. So as we're in the middle of the medical aid at Pepperwood, we got another call for another ALS intervention that needed to happen at Creekside Drive. Laytonville was just staffing up, Burke Trail's was nice stuff there, Lunch came to help. 5120 out of Laytonville had to come all the way from Laytonville, because they, they didn't have time to move to Long Vale, they had to come all the way from Laytonville to deal with the ALS patient at Creekside. Meanwhile, because we're at level negative one, Ukiah breaks a medical aid, and then 6821 had to be put in place in order to take that medical aid.
What is ALS?
Advanced Life Support, Paramedic Intervention. Now, here's, here's the part that's, that's trying. I called Howard Forest afterwards, that's our dispatch, and asked for, I want to know how we got to level one, what caused us to get to level one. As fire chiefs, we hear all the time that interfacility transfers, transferring patients from one hospital to the next, is not the cause for ambulance drawdown. They'll tell you that, they'll tell you all day long, it's not the cause for drawdown, but I'll let you, I'll let you draw your own conclusion to that after I give you this scenario. I called Howard Forest, I'll read the email, and go directly off the email from Howard Forest. And you look at the timeline in your request of why we are at level one status at 11:24 hours on December 4th. Medic 9112 and 9116 are on long-distance transfers. Okay? IFT, they're called IFTs. IFT, IFT, means they are not in the county, they are not available. So we're at level two at that point, right? We can't take transfers at that time. Everybody understands that we can't take another transfer. And then, until, I should say, 9111 at 11:20 hours was committed to a staff interfacility transfer. The doctor at the hospital decided that it met the trigger point for a staff ALS transfer. That 9111 then goes on... Now it's out of Willet's? I believe it was out of Ukiah, but it's out of the same pool of ambulances. Okay. 9111 goes on an IFT, staff transfer, brings us down to level one. So we are running a transfer outside of level two. So at level one now, we have 9150, that's now in Redwood Valley, it's no longer in Willet's, it's in Redwood Valley, and that's what started the sequence of events right here in Willet's. Now, when you look at the picture, I think it's easy to see what dictates 911 ambulance in the center of our county, and what, and the availability of those ambulances. Now, this is a complex problem. I'm not picking on the hospital or the ambulance service, I'm just giving you the facts and the stats of where we are. The hospital has serious needs. They need to move patients, they have to move patients, they, they don't have a choice. We've got 25 or 26 beds, or whatever it is, they, they need to be able to do that in Willet's, they need to be able to do that in Ukiah. As fire chiefs, we're saying, our priority, we need to get people from the street to definitive care. People call 911, we have to get them from the street to the hospital. To us, that's more important than moving from definitive care to definitive care. So we have this situation where the hospital has these needs, we have these needs, the ambulance service saying, we're doing the best we can with what we have, they're, the paramedics are running ragged. I tell you what, they are wore out, they're running 24-hour shifts, they're up all night, doing transfers from here to Reading and back. It's, it's every single night, you guys. And it's time that we come up with a plan in the county to provide for EMS to our, to our communities. That's what we need first, before we do anything else. I know that there's, there was a push for asset sales tax and all that, I'm not into that to a plan. We need to know what it looks like from all the stakeholders in the county. As we all know, the exclusive operating area RFP fell through a few months back at the county.
RFP is a request for proposal to have a single ambulance provider in the central corridor to provide a base level of response based on a contract. Thank you.
And Chris, if maybe I could add that, had they done that, obviously, for the, for the for-profit ambulances, or how they make money...
The profit comes out of transport, it's not out of...
No, it, and it comes out of, yeah, they don't, from the guy they pick up from 911, they don't make money, they make money from Medicare and all of that, so, sorry to interrupt, Chris, but basically, yeah, so, so had this come into play, it'd be like me saying, you can be the only truck driver for Willet's, and you get the good with the bad. And that's basically what would have happened if that had come through, would have made it more financially palatable for somebody to come in, and at the same time, they would be committed to staff up for the other things. Is that correct, Chris?
For the most part, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a big document, it's a 260-page document. But it didn't, it doesn't matter, it's gone, that document's gone. There is, there is no RFP in play, there is no EOA in play, we're stuck with what we have to deal with. So, again, it's very complex, it's not going to be fixed here tonight. We literally run, I urge anybody that wants to see it, it's available. If you're concerned with how the ambulances are dispatched and used, whether that be IFTs or, or 911s, it's called a system status management plan, they can be gotten from Coastal Valley EMS Agency.
Chris, you mentioned Coastal Valley, and you might explain what their role in all of this is, and the county.
They're what they call our LMSA. The county's required by law, Title 22, to have a local EMS authority. They can be their own local EMS authority, they can have a function of the county that does that, or they can subcontract. Our county chooses to subcontract, which is fine with Coastal Valley EMS Agency out of Sonoma County, they, they provide, they're the LMSA for Sonoma County, and certainly in Mendocino County as well. And they are the folks that, they provide medical direction for us, the paramedics, EMTs, all certify through Coastal Valley EMS Agency, our protocols come from them. They're supposed to help develop a plan for how EMS is provided in our area, but ultimately, any contracting, anything of that nature is through the, literally through the CEO's office at the county.
Actually, Suprina had a question to think of.
Yeah, could you just briefly describe, how do they fund Laytonville and the Coast?
They, they have their own district, so it's special taxes.
Special tax.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Special taxes, yes.
Is there a standard for the ratio of population to number of ambulances available, and does this for...
There probably is, I'm not sure what that is, but that information can be easily gotten from Coastal Valley EMS, they keep stats of that nature.
Okay, because, I mean, obviously, we also have more challenges than just, like San Francisco, or whatever, you know, a metropolitan area, because our population is more spread out.
Or demographics are different.
Yes, completely.
You know, percentage, percentage of population that are on Medicaid, as example, Medi-Cal, Medicare, and how they pay, round numbers, we don't run an ambulance company, but if an ambulance ride is $1,000, they'll get paid $200 from Medi-Cal.
It just seems really, you know, common sense, that if we're constantly getting down to two, one, zero, and minus, that we don't have enough.
We definitely need help.
So, you mentioned earlier that the ambulance numbers come from LAFCO, and that's based on population, is that what you said?
No, 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 I just use LAFCO numbers for population numbers.
Okay, so I just want to put out to the general public that that means that the census is super important next year, for everybody to make sure they get counted, because the more people who are counted in our county, the more resources we get for our county. We have a lot of people who want to be off the grid, don't want to be known, but it's really important that we count everyone, because it can make a difference in a situation like this. The more people we know who are here, the more call... The more people we know who are here, the more call we have for services to provide to everyone when they need them. Tell your friends.
It's, it's interesting to me when you get into EMCC meetings, and I'm sure Chief Norrie would agree with me, they can become a real, a real fight sometimes because you have, you have 911 services, like fire departments, fighting to try to get more ambulances to or EMS service to the, to the public. You have the hospitals that are fighting. The reality is, we all want the same thing. We all know the system is broken and it's failing right now. We have to come up with a plan of how to fix it. We have to push the, the powers that be at the county to, to sit down and develop a really good group of stakeholders to start nail this down. Stakeholders being fire districts, ambulance services, county staff-
Hospitals.
And the hospitals to develop a problem. I'm not sure that everybody knows how much it affects. I'm not su, I don't know, I haven't been able to sit down with Jason at the hospital. I don't know if he understands that this is how, this is how we end up. I, I, I don't know. Was that? Andrews permit. We'll talk about that real quick.
I talked to Jason, I called him twice. I said, I know, we know we have a problem. And Howard Hospital is wonderful. Why don't they, as a hospital, say we have a problem, we need to do something about it? Let's get somebody here. And I don't know if they can't do that, by law, I have no clue.
There, there's probably permitting issues, not probably, you know, there's, there are, there are permitting issues that come into play. Right now in Mendocino County, if, if we wanted, I'm gonna pick on you, John, if we wanted to bring in John's ambulance service, if he just wants to do 911s, he can come and get a permit and bring John's ambulance in here and put it wherever he wants and he can go to work, right? Be on the list and call for an ambulance. If, if John wants to do transfers, he has to provide one 911 ambulance. That's it. And it's anywhere in the county, right? So if John wants to take one of these IFTs, he can do that with one of his ambulances, but he has to have another ambulance available. But the problem is, when you have, when you only have one company, that's one permit, and there's four ambulances, well, three of them can be, as it was today, used as IFTs and the one that's available is in the center of the county serving 60,000 people. And I'm gonna tell you now, 911s, thank goodness for MedStar, 911s don't pay. When that ambulance is sitting at Redwood Valley and they get a call to a, a patient that either doesn't have insurance at all or, or is, is on a government-assisted insurance, they don't, they don't cover their costs in any way, shape, or form. The only way that the ambulance service covers, covers their costs is that right there.
Or if somebody has insurance.
Or if they have insurance. But I'm saying, IFTs are funding. That's how they, that's how they stay alive. So it's super complex. Because if you take these transfers away from the ambulance service in Mendocino County, bye-bye. They're not here anymore. They, they don't exist.
We have such a wonderful hospital here, people, if they can't, some more community servicing their patients, what's gonna-
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end with saying what I, what I would see in a perfect world. This is probably not gonna happen here, and I don't think that in, in our area, we're never gonna see what I'll call as the Cadillac ambulance service. We're, we're not gonna have that. We don't have the money or the demographics to have a Marin County-type Cadillac service, okay? So it's never gonna be perfect. But if I had my way, hospitals would contract for transfer service. Even though the 911 system loses, we should be subsidizing that 911 service to make sure that they stay whole with a base level of performance, response times, and the amount of ambulances needed. That's, that's what I would like to see. That's what we thought we were gonna see in the EOA. By no means do I think that IFT should've been a part of the package with the EOA, but I'm not, I don't wanna go down a road that's already, that's already passed and gone. But if I had my way, that's the way, that's the way that it, it would be. Because I will tell you, to run one ambulance in the city of Willis, like, let's say Little Lake Fire District decided, hey, we're gonna, we wanna run ALS ambulance and just do 911s here, it's 100, it would cost 150% of our current budget to run one ambulance for one year. Okay, so, so the odds of that happening with our little fire district is probably not good. And anyway, always available, I wanna, you guys be able to move on with your meeting.
Chris, I think we're ahead of-
Well, I just wanted to say, and this isn't a question for you, but it seems to me that this squeaky wheel gets the grease and the county needs to come up with a plan for handling this. And so it seems to me it would be a good idea for us from the city to have someone regularly attending the supervisors' meetings and squeaking and saying, we need, we need a plan, we need an answer, and we need to solve this problem for our community because this is not a tenable situation. So I propose that we figure out who's gonna go regularly to Sups and-
Well, I think it'd have to be when they have, if they have-
They're not on every meeting, but you know, you're, I think you're gonna see-
You can speak during public comment, right? That's what we did.
Sure, absolutely. They actually had a great representation of-
And we, we hear it.
We can encourage our community to write letters. And then you also mentioned about the College of Paramedic Program. As leaders in this room and here at the, we can reach out to the college as well and encourage a paramedic-
I, I would, I would strongly suggest that.
I just wanna say that I, I know the county has been having meetings and the city of Ukiah is currently funding also a study to see, you know, what the needs are and what that would cost. And there is activity behind the scenes of trying to figure out what to do. But one of the things, there was a meeting a couple weeks ago that Jerry and I were on the, the mayor and Matt, and Councilmember Strong, we were all on the phone in that meeting discussing, and, you know, one of the things, this is a county duty, this is a, throughout the state of California, this is a county, that's why they have LMSs, that's why, that is their function. And it is really important that we advocate. But at the same time, and they also have a number of different funding mechanisms as a county. And while they ran to this asset, said sales tax, there's also parcel taxes, there are other, the county has a, a lot of flexibility in ways to raise money, and we need to encourage them to, to really explore all of their options in the funding this. And so, and that's what we did during this meeting, is, is encourage that, so.
Yeah, I just really like what you said, Chris, about you wouldn't want to, okay, I can't remember exactly the words you, but until they have a plan for how they're going to meet these needs, they shouldn't just go out and start throwing money at it. They need to have a plan for how to do it.
This is not a problem that can be solved by throwing money.
Yeah, right.
You, you have to know, have a goal and know what you want as a plan.
Thank you.
And, and, and funding that is a, is part of doing it.
Yeah.
And that's gonna come, that's gonna come with a plan.
Right.
But until you have that plan in place, I, I don't think it's fair to just grab, try to grab money.
Right, good.
You know, certainly.
I would second that idea.
And I think that the city of Ukiah study is gonna be very interesting because it's supposed to be an in-depth analysis.
As found, just so we're all aware too, during the EOA process and the RFP for that, you know, Ukiah was really the only city that an ambulance company was capable of making money in, in, in the central quarter. Everywhere else is actually, uh, uh, Willis is like a, a super breakeven, everywhere else is, is a loser monetarily in the central quarter. And it's a rough way to do business when you're a for-profit private company.
Thank you for your explanation of the level. That was really helpful.
Very helpful.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Number one, I'm sorry for your loss. And again, like Suprina said, I think, is it Suprina or no, Greta said the squeaky wheel. I think that, obviously, it's not over with for you guys, it shouldn't be over with for the community.
We do want you to speak up more, so that's where our minds are. And we need your help.
Our hearts are with you, and I think we'll all do what we can.
Thank you.
I have a personal issue. So my son got really sick, and we went to Howard Hospital, awesome. But we had to get a transfer, 1:00, get an ambulance, get an ambulance. Couldn't get one until midnight. I finally said no, signed the waiver, took him myself. It's a very hard thing to have your son in those conditions.
Yeah.
And I know this isn't a venue to dissolution, I understand. But for the community out there, please, speak up. Squeaky wheel does get the grease. My wife's the best squeaky wheel in all of them, she writes the letters. But it is a very serious thing. Sometimes we don't speak out until it hits home. And just, just be cautious of that, and it's a very serious issue, and when it affects you, it can be very important. And I commend Chris and our staff, I mean, they do a wonderful job with Logan.
At this point, I'll ask, is there anybody else who would like to speak on public comment? Okay. Go ahead.
Well, my issue seems really trivial, sorry for your loss. I, so, I, I have a weekend home here on West Oak. Behind there, behind the, um, West Oak and in between Highway 20, there's an abandoned alleyway. So I've had to scoot the homelessness out of the alley. And of course, I'm, I'm not the biggest Schwarzenegger on the planet, I've been, you know, they come after me and try and intimidate me. I have put out one fire myself because the little encampment started the fire. So I just wrote a little blurb and I sent it and gave it to Dusty as well, tried to figure out what I can do, and if I have to kick in some money, I'm more than happy to kick in some money to ideally eliminate the alley and then have I, each side that butts up against the alley take ownership and so, and pay for it, in essence. So this is my issue tonight, I know it's trivial compared to the scheme of our community in life, so that's all I have to say.
And I just wanna respond, he has reached out to us and to the planning department, there is a way forward on this, and he's gonna, I'm sorry, I have forgotten your name, my apologies.
Nick, think of Saint Nick.
Dusty and I have discussed your issue, there is a way forward, it's something that we can work with you on at some point. It's gonna require council action, but not now. But until we get to that point, we can help you along that path. And I think Dusty's explained that too.
Fabulous, and I'm more than willing to do once needs to be done.
Yes. But, but the, the policy decision involving a council decision won't come now, but there's some work that you need to do and we can help you sort of direct you.
Fantastic, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else would like to come up and speak? Okay. At this point, I've closed public communication, and I guess Stephanie, I guess you can take over the meeting.
Taking over the meeting. Watch out. Um, yes, we are at item 3A and 3B where we are opening nominations for the appointment of mayor for the city of Willis. And, yes, Councilmember Strong?
Yes, I would make a motion that we elect Jerry Gonzalez to be, reelect him to be mayor.
I second that.
Right, at this point-
I think he's done a really good job and to continue.
And can we, can take a vote on that or we can have discussion?
Yes, he has to accept it.
Oh, he has to accept, oh.
I will accept.
Do we have a vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Pani?
Discussion or?
Okay.
Are we voting or are we having discussions?
We're ready for votes.
If anyone has a discussion-
Actually Kathy does this.
Yeah.
Sorry. Councilmember Pani?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor's vote?
Yes.
All right, then we have a new mayor, congratulations. We would now like to open up the nomination for the appointment of a vice mayor.
Nominate Larry Stransky?
All right. I'll second that. All right. Councilmember Pani?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
No.
Strong?
No.
Stransky?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and then, yeses have it, and I'm-
Before we move on from this item, I'd like to, since this particular topic is on the air, um, every time that we do this, every year, it's a very awkward process, and I think that there is a lot of politics that go into the vote. And I was doing some research on what other cities do in this type of situation. For example, in 2002, Ukiah got away from the, the annual changing of the mayorship by allowing council members to elect within themselves. Each of us was elected by members of the public to sit up here and fulfill a leadership role. And in 2002, Ukiah recognized that and they changed to a rotation where every year there was a rotating member of the council that had the opportunity to serve as mayor. And I would propose that this council take that under consideration and come up as a council with a plan on what that might look like. I have both participated in and been a member of this council for three years, and during that period of time, I've seen how this moment affects decisions throughout the year, whether you are getting along with your peers on the council, whether, there's just lots of things that go into the play, and I don't always think that it's in the best interest of the public. Sometimes it does work out in favor for the public, but not, not always. And so I would just suggest to this council that we consider, again, a system that takes politics out of play and we go, we move toward a rotation. Does anybody else share those views?
I have mixed feelings about it, I think it is very awkward, but I, I kinda feel there, the advantages of doing it, as uncomfortable as it is, is that, that the five of us get to select who is gonna be the chair of the meetings and, and coordinate agendas, and I, and I think that that overrides the awkwardness that we have to go through to get there. So I guess I think it is important for us to select who we want to have be in that chair position. So I, I guess I wouldn't want to change that.
So just for clarification, you feel more comfortable with the five of us making that decision rather than the public making that decision when they vote for us at the polls each time they vote for who's gonna be on the council?
That, that is true, because I, I think we have to work together and we, you know, so each of us is elected by a majority of, of the vote of the public, but that doesn't mean each of us is equally skilled at different aspects of the job. So it's, it's a tough call and I, and bivouled about it, but I, I see the advantage being there, so.
Okay. And then there was also one thing, I notice that each year when we do discuss this, we discuss it amongst ourselves, but we never give the public the opportunity to give any feedback like any other item that's on the agenda. There's never an opportunity for the public to speak on, on that agenda item, and that's something that we should recognize as well. Because if the public does have something that they wanna say about it, I've been asked many times why the public doesn't have the opportunity to vote their own mayor. They don't understand that process. We're elected to the council, but why is it the council makes that decision? And maybe that would be their opportunity to step up and, and put in their public input, so, just some thought.
Well, just, there are some cities where the mayor is elected directly. So in other words, you, you elect four council members and you elect a mayor separately. But in our system, we have, the five of us are all co-equally elected from the public vote, and then amongst us, we decide who will be the mayor. But it, the mayor doesn't have any additional power than the rest of the four of us. They don't get to make a bunch of decisions on their own. Whereas a strong mayor system that some cities have, the mayor is more like the city manager. So it, it's a hybrid system and, you know, there's pro and con on, on all those options, but I think for now, I'm, I'm not ready to scramble this system up. Just personally, I feel like it's working okay.
Again, this was further, I think we're gonna move on to-
So I'm assuming there's no public comment or we're not gonna take any public comment? Should there be any? I don't even know that there is any-
It should've been before our vote if we did.
Well, we're still on the, I, I'm just curious, because we don't allow public comment, or we haven't been.
We haven't been? I, I can open up for public comment, I, my apologies, I'm not used to running a meeting. Certainly, if it's the council's desire to expect, to accept public comment, we can do that.
I'm just saying that it should be a standard policy like with anything else. Okay.
Good.
I, I do agree.
The city council approved a manual procedures and protocols that address this very issue of the procedure for the vote for a mayor and for a vice mayor. That's at page 16 of the procedures. And so if there was a desire among the consensus of the council to modify the rules to propose a different system, we would need to do that and change, change the procedures that we've adopted, that the council has adopted.
I just know that it's always, to be perfectly honest, when we go to vote for mayor, it's the person who's quickest with their hand or the first comment. And it, there's, there doesn't seem to be a, a more level field for making those nominations.
I've actually seen when, before I was on the council, when I was sitting out there, I've seen the first person to nominate someone have their nomination not get seconded or have the vote not get there. So it's not necess, I mean.
I've seen that one.
Yes, but not always.
Yeah.
Nobody has to change places.
Is that? Or do you wanna?
The, the vote's already been taken.
Yes, so we can move on then.
So I'll give the meeting back to you.
Okay. All right, item 3C, presentation by PG&E and Sonoma Clean Power. Time of use transition.
Uh, do we have a time point?
Please, oh, you gotta wake it up again. Do you want me to move so that the public can see? So if you could state your name and then.
So while they get that pulled up, Jessica's actually gonna do the presentation, so I'm just gonna kick it off. I am Danielle Baker. I'm the Senior Customer Care Specialist with Sonoma Clean Power. I work primarily with our residential customers. So if any of you have issues, it's typically coming to my desk first. I haven't seen many, so that's always good too. So we are here today to talk about the time of use transition. And I just kind of want to preface that although this is mandated to PG&E by the California Public Utilities Commission, Sonoma Clean Power's board did vote to transition our customers too. So SCP customers as well as PG&E bundled customers are gonna be treated completely the same during this transition. We will be offering bill protection, so everything that Jessica is going to present applies to both SCP customers and PG&E customers. Kind of the primary reasons that our board approved to transition our customers was first and foremost that it's beneficial to our customers. This is actually a really good thing that's happening. And during our pilot, which was about 8,500 customers, we saw a really high level of acceptance with this. And so again, we really think this is in the best interest of our customers and we think it's gonna be an easy transition moving forward.
Could you just very briefly explain, because not everybody understands the transition or the relationship of PG&E and Sonoma Clean Power and here in Wilkes.
Yes. So Sonoma Clean Power is the default electric generation provider for Sonoma and Mendocino counties. We partner with PG&E, so we provide the generation, the actual electricity that you use when you turn the lights on. And then PG&E delivers it over their poles and wires and continues to do the billing. So we are partners and, and again, this process has been extremely collaborative. It's been a really great experience and we're excited to do the full transition.
Thanks, Danielle.
Okay, Danielle advised. My name is Jessica. Jessica Chancellor. I work for PG&E. My role with PG&E is to assist with any kind of rate-related items pertaining to residential or non-residential. And the time of use transition is just one of those items that we're here to speak to you about today. I'm gonna take you through some of the information in regards to. I will, oh, there we go. Okay. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of a basic overview to start with. As I go through this information, if you have questions, please feel free to ask them as I'm going through versus holding them to the end, just so that we can continue to have more of an engaged conversation about what's gonna be coming up in the community. As Danielle said, this is good news for SCP customers. And so we're here to provide that good news for you. So this, this is actually something you can be happy about that's coming. And, and most of our CCAs throughout our territory have also agreed to participate. So I'll get a little bit more into the details of that. But first, let's start off with understanding a little bit more about why are we doing time of use? There's really three main reasons as to why we would do it. One is the California Public Utility Commission has mandated PG&E to help customers make rates a little bit more understandable. As you can imagine, you look at your bill today and maybe it's pretty confusing, it's complex. Rates inherently are that way, so this is ideally supposed to help make it a little bit more understandable for customers. Two, it's more cost-based, based on the way that you use your energy. So if you use your energy during the peak hours where everybody else is using their energy, then you'd be paying a little bit higher cost for that. If you're using it during the off-peak hours when customers are typically not using their energy, maybe it's in the middle of the night, you're gonna pay a lower price for that. It's just relationship to when there's a higher demand on the grid to serve the energy to our customers. And then three, because of the cost-based piece, it also encourages customers to really shift their energy to the off-peak periods and help us to ensure that we have a reliable, sustainable grid for the future. Because whether we like it or not, California unfortunately is, is a pretty wasteful state when it comes to energy. There's not a lot of us that really are mindful about the way we use our energy and conservation. And so this is to help get us into that same space of being really aware of when we're using it, conserving and shifting. PG&E is not alone in this transition. We have been mandated, as I said, by the California Public Utility Commission, but so have the other two investor-owned utilities in California. So that would be San Diego Gas and Electric and then Southern California Edison as well. So this is really something that's happening statewide. Now, this is a look at what the time-of-use rate structure that we would be using for the transition looks like. This is on PG&E's website today, so you could go online and get more information about it at a later time if you chose to. But essentially what this is representing is that Monday through Sunday, or all seven days of the week, then you, if you're using energy from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, that's considered your peak hours. And peak meaning you're gonna pay a higher cost. Okay, so the off-peak hours are the other, um, all the other hours of the day. So the other 19 hours of the day are off-peak, meaning you're paying a lower price. So that's just a little bit look at the rate structure that we would be using for the time-of-use transition. Yes, sir?
Four to nine is really hard for people that work, both family members, and, because that's the time they're home.
True.
And so what you're doing is making it hard for people that both people are working. And, uh, because if you're cooking dinner or if you're doing your wash or you're doing whatever it is, those are the hours that you have available to do it.
So I'm gonna get into a little bit about how SCP's customers currently, how they would be impacted right now, just based on the way that they have already been using their energy. I can tell you also that across PG&E's territory, not just SCP's territory, but across all of the territories, specifically more coastal environments, those customers are what we refer to as structural winners. And what that means is that they wouldn't have to make a change at all and they would actually benefit by moving to this time-of-use transition plan. There are customers who maybe fall in the neutral category and I'll show you a little bit more about the financial impacts of this. But those customers, if you actually made a change in any kind of effort to either A, conserve or B, just shift your usage, then you're gonna be able to see that you're a winner in this, on this time-of-use rate. So although yes, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM is the critical time when most customers are home, but again, that's the same relationship as to why the demand is highest on the grid. We would encourage customers by being on this rate plan to just shift some of that usage, such as like maybe do your laundry on a timer, your dishwasher on a timer after 9:00 PM. You could do pre-cooling, pre-heating, uh, things of that nature where you are just a little bit more cognizant and shift the things that you can. It doesn't mean you don't have to use energy, because remember, there's 19 other hours of the day that actually you are getting a lower cost, so it does offset as well. Yes?
Does time-of-use apply to those who are hooked into a solar grid on their homes?
It can. They, uh, solar customers have ability to choose their rates in most cases. They, if you are a standard NEM customer, that's net energy metering, for those who might not know, which means solar, that you have the ability to have all of your rate options. So you could be on a tiered rate plan or you could be on a time-of-use rate plan, which, the choice is really yours. If you are a newer customer to solar, uh, NEM 2.0 is what we refer to it as, that rate requires a time-of-use rate. So again, you would still have your option of selecting a time-of-use rate, but you would have to be time-of-use.
Meaning that you could choose when your peak time is?
We have multiple time-of-use rates. So it, this one that I'm showing you today is the one that we're using for the transition. This is the one that the CPUC has instructed us to, to use. But we do have other time-of-use rates currently today that are available to our residential customers.
Only to solar or to everybody?
Everybody. So there's different things that, um, might benefit one customer versus another and because we know that there is differences in lifestyles and needs of how much energy needs to be used, time of day the energy needs to be used, there are those options available to customers to better fit what their, their lifestyle needs.
And would we find that if we were to look at our bill, would it, would it indicate what time-of-use we're, we're locked into?
You, I would not say that you're locked into any rate per se, because you always have rate choices. But what I would recommend is that do pay attention to your bill. Look at your bill, see what rate you're on. Go online. If you don't have ability to get online, call us, call the contact center and have them do a rate comparison. So this is something that's available to all of our customers in residential as well as the majority of our customers for non-residential. So go online, do your rate comparison and ensure that you are in fact on the best rate for your household. And that's based on how you use your energy over the past 12 months. So you're gonna get a true representation of what those costs look like.
So you're saying that customers can call at any time and get a rate comparison to find out if there's a different option and save them money?
Correct.
And they would call PG&E or they call SCP?
They would call PG&E. PG&E has ability to, um, to do the rate comparison for the customer. It's a tool that is utilized, uh, only within PG&E or online for the customer. In order for a customer to use it, they'd have to log into their account online because it has their customer usage and that's proprietary information. It's personal customer information that just can't be shared with anyone. And although SCP is our partner, we're very, very strict with providing customer information out to others when it's not necessary.
So just for clarification, if I was a consumer, I would call PG&E, ask for a rate comparison and then select the time-of-use that works best for me?
What's gonna happen is it's not just gonna narrow you down to time-of-use, it's gonna look at all of our rate options that you're eligible for.
So just select the best plan?
Correct. If, if financially that's what you're most interested in is making sure that you're getting your lowest cost, which I think that's primarily all of us. Maybe there's a few out there that are, have other greener initiatives or things of that nature. But, uh, yes, it doesn't mean necessarily that it would be time-of-use, but it just so happens that SCP's area, this territory, is predominantly going to benefit with this rate plan.
I, I thought you said that, um, everybody was gonna go on a transitional time-of-use, um, rate structure. And first of all, I was wondering how long is the transition? But is that, does that apply to everybody or, or there's still these choices?
That's a great question. I'm gonna give you a little bit more information about who is, um, going to be targeted with this transition and who would be eligible and who's not gonna be included. So, um, did you have another question before I move on to that?
No, thank you.
Oh, I just, I just had a quick question. I have called PG&E before and it's a very automated system. And is there a way that you can give a hint to consumers to actually get to a human being to ask these questions?
I would actually recommend that you go online, because it is very easy to do the rate comparison. If you have phones and you wanna do, you have a smartphone, you wanna log into your account tonight after we do the presentation, I'll show you how to do it and it's literally a click of a button. So it, that would be my first recommendation, because it's that easy. Number two, if you are calling in, you do actually, um, it's gonna give you information about your rate plan options, but then you would just say representative.
Zero, zero, zero. They're trying to trick you now.
Okay, all right, so as I explained, this is CPUC mandated. The California Public Utility Commission has required PG&E to do this. And in order to support this initiative, they have also put forth a statewide campaign. So you're going to start to see commercials, um, just any kind of literature outreach, different ways to reach out to the community to make sure that customers are aware that this is occurring. It's happening right now in Southern California, so they already have kind of kicked off the campaign there. You may have even seen some materials just floating around. But because you're not scheduled to transition until much later, that's when really the heavy promotion of the transition will occur. The idea behind the statewide campaign is to give you more of an emotional-based feeling around time-of-use transition. It's not only just about money, it is also about making sure that we have a reliable grid for the future, that we can actually meet the demands of our customers and deliver the energy that they need. So it's to be a little bit more emotional-based as well.
I think there's plenty of emotion about PG&E.
Touche. Good point, for sure. I think it's stuck. I'm trying to scroll and it won't let me scroll.
Push the button on the mouse. The mouse, I think, may have turned off.
I promise I'm, I am computer.
Mouse turned off.
There we go. Okay, so, um. Okay, so we had a question about who's eligible, who, who's gonna be included in this transition. Here's a little bit more information about that. So what's going to happen is, beginning in October 2020, that's when we're gonna start the rollout of the time-of-use transition for residential customers. Those customers who are targeted will be moving to a, unless they make a choice, they will be moving to our time-of-use peak pricing 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM everyday rate plan. It's a mouthful. We also call it ETOUC. C for cat, okay? Customers who will be targeted in the transition are going to only be E1 tiered rate plan customers. And what that means is that they don't already have a time-of-use plan, okay? They are getting billed for the energy just based on the more they use, the more they pay. That's it. Has nothing to do with when you use it and shifting or anything like that. Of course, we want you to shift.
The majority of the consumers out there?
Yes, and that is our standard rate plan today. So currently, in today's world, if you start new service at your residence, they're going to have a rates conversation with you. They're gonna let you know that we have rate plan options available. They're gonna give you a brief summary of what each one of those rate plans is good for and then they're gonna ask you for your choice. Once you have established some energy usage at your residence, you'll be able to do that rate comparison that we just talked about, because it's gonna base your recommended rate plan based on how you've been using your energy already at that point. If it's a new residence, there is no historical usage for the tool to consider. That's why we can't do it right away and you have to have some usage to be considered. Now, if a customer doesn't elect a rate plan, they automatically get put on E1, which is a tiered rate plan. The more you use, the more you pay, okay? That's the way to think about it. Those are the customers that will be targeted in the time-of-use transition. So anyone who is currently E1. If you're already on a time-of-use, you're not included. There are going to be some exclusions though. Specifically, if a customer is considered to be in a hot climate zone, maybe you are in, um, the valley area where I'm from Sacramento, so that's pretty hot. You know, PG&E has surrounding territories around there. And those customers who are in hot climates and also on a financial assistance program such as CARE or FARA. and also on a financial assistance program such as CARE or FARA, they are automatically excluded. They're not going to be part of the transition. You can always elect to move to this rate if you choose to, but you're not going to be automatically, um, put into the transition. If you're on a medical assistance program, maybe you have life support, um, you use a CPAT machine, something like that, you're also not included. Uh, and then you have to have at least 12 months of data, uh, so meaning you have been at your residence for the last 12 months at least. So we can run that rate comparison for you and ensure that you are aware of what's the financial impacts are going to be if you do transition to this rate. We don't have that 12 months, you're not included because we want to make sure you're fully aware of what's going to be taking place. Um, customers have the ability to decline the transition at any time. You can do it early, you can do it during, you can do it right before you transition. You can change your rate plan after you've transitioned. So it's really about choice. Okay, you do have a choice in this matter. Um, you can change to a different rate plan or stay on your existing rate plan. And then one of the best pieces about it is that so customers feel like they can comfortably try this rate plan, PG&E is giving, as well as most of our, um, community choice aggregator partners are giving customers 12 months of free bill protection and, um, or risk-free bill protection. And what that means is that if you pay more by being on the TOUC rate than you would on your tiered rate at the end of that 12 months, or whenever you get off the rate plan within that 12 months, we're going to credit you back the difference on your bill. So you have the ability to try it risk-free. So that's the great news about it, yeah.
Uh, people that don't have smart meters, are, do they have a record of what their time of use has been?
Those customers would not be transitioned because we don't have that data. So unless, um, so there are certain meter types that we wouldn't have the data for. If a customer doesn't have a smart meter, but we have a programmed meter that we do get the reads from that gives us the hourly increments, then yes, they could still be included. But it has to be a specifically programmed meter. So that's.
So that's an individual case you're going to figure out?
Yes. It's a, it, yeah, most, most of them will not be included. Okay. Okay, so again, 12 months of free bill protection is going to be provided for the first year at your premise. Um, that's what I just explained for you. So it gives customers the ability to try it risk-free. Now, to prepare us for this time of use transition, we did a, a pilot, so to speak. Um, Danielle alluded to that a bit. We included three of our community choice aggregator partners in the pilot. We transitioned about 114,000 customers back in April of 2018 to see what the customer sentiment was going to be, kind of test and try different methods to see what resonated most with customers and figure out how we needed to really plan and deploy for a full transition. And what we found was that 80% of customers who were transitioned remained on the rate. They were super high satisfaction. Um, customers, what was really important for us to know is were they aware of what was happening? And 68% said that they were, which is actually a pretty high, um, percentage. Usually it's much lower when it comes to things of this nature. Uh, and we had a very high use of online services. So, um, overall, there was some reductions, but more so in our hotter climate areas than, uh, for shifting of usage than any other climates. And we did see that CCA customers and PG&E customers overall performed pretty similarly. So they had the same, um, types of results. Now, for the full transition, as I explained, we're going to kick it off in October 2020. SCP's territories are not going to deploy though right then. They are actually slated for, can't read my thing there. I think it says July or June?
I think it's May.
May? So that says up there, May? So the one that's highlighted in the blue box, can you help me out, Larry, is that?
Yeah, it's March.
Or March?
M A R.
March of 2021.
Yeah.
Okay. So March of 2021 is when, um, those customers primarily will be transitioned. The only caveat to that is NEM customers, they typically have, um, some attachment to their true-up period. And, uh, their true-up period happens once a year for PG&E. And, and because they can have attachment to that, those customers will transition based on whenever their true-up period is because this transition will cause that true-up to occur. So we don't want to create a poor experience for the customer and have them have, go through two true-ups. Just because it's not.
Yeah, they won't be happy about that.
No, they, and we've heard that from customers, so we want to avoid that. A true-up, what that means is that with solar, you're generating energy back to the grid, um, and you're using energy. So, uh, you're getting paid. If you are getting energy back to the grid, you're getting paid a certain amount that kind of goes into a bucket. The net energy metering is the piece of, at the end after 12 months, that is all trued up and it's calculated, balanced out, and you either owe or you, maybe you have a credit that's coming to you. So that's what net energy metering is about, is providing energy back to the grid and, and covering your own energy usage as well as potentially giving yourself some money in your pocket. Now, prior to the transition, customers will receive at least two notifications to, uh, make sure that they're aware of what's happening. Uh, one is a 90-day rate comparison notification. And what's going to be, uh, important about that one is it does have the outlined three, has three rates showing the annual costs that the customer is expected to likely have based on how they've used their energy over the past 12 months. So they're going to be provided with a notification that gives them, it, right out in front of them, their E1, which is the rate they're currently on, their annual estimated cost, the ETOUC, and then another ETOU rate as well. And so they're going to have the, the option to, to decline the transition at that point. They can change to one of the other rates or remain on, uh, their tiered rate plan. Prior to that, there will also be a 30-day notification. So if customers haven't taken any action, that's when that notification will go out. And then for our more highly impacted customers, uh, we haven't defined exactly what the definition's going to be of that. But typically, it is, um, a customer who will see an annual impact of $100 or more per year, which would mean that they would spend possibly up to, um, $10 more a month at the, at the very most because it's $100 a year. And if it's a CARE or FARA customer, one of the limited income customers, then it would be $50 annual impact a year. Those customers would get an outbound phone call, uh, by like a robot machine, you know, and, and give the customer the option to decline the transition right then, to speak to a representative, or give them information about online, um, services that they can educate themselves on more as well if they chose to go that route. After a customer transitions, they get a welcome letter. Again, just kind of explaining the rate plan to them, how to best use energy while being on the rate plan. And then as they move through the summer, their first summer month, they get a summer support campaign. And what that is, is again, very specific tips on how to best use energy while being on this rate plan in that season of month. Because typically, time of use customers, that is going to be their higher price period is the summer because of the extra cooling that happens a lot of the times. Uh, but, and so it's just to make sure that they're aware of these energy-saving tips so that they can, um, avoid and have minimal impacts to that.
I have a clarifying question. You had stated, and I, I just want to make sure I stand this correctly. In the first 12 months, if you're on the CARE and the medical assistance program, you're not going to be included in this. But then you just talked about how those people could see a potential increase of up to $50 and be triggered for that call. So does that mean that in the second year that they are going to be impacted?
No, the excluded customers with CARE and FARA are in hot climate zones only.
Okay.
So it's a hot climate customer, um.
And we're not a hot climate customer?
No, you're not.
Okay, so it doesn't.
But again, this territory is predominantly structural winners, and I'll show you what the financial impacts look like for most of your customer population. Uh, now, as we approach the end of that year period of being on the rate and covered by bill protection, around the 11th month, we're going to send the customers a letter letting them know how they've performed to date, how they expected to save, uh, you know, over the course of that whole 12 months. Are they, uh, pretty much neutral? Or did they actually spend more? And it's going to give them information, again, reinforce that they have a rate choice, um, and they can change their choice at any time. Uh, and if they did spend more, then they'll be getting that bill credit back to them , um, after that 12-month billing has occurred.
Like just the first year or every year going forward?
Just 12 months. And it's one time at each premise. Uh, so, one of the, um, the components to bill protection is that you either, A, have to be part of the transition because you're in, you're on the E1 rate plan and you've been considered eligible for this. Um, or you currently have E1 at your existing premise. Maybe you are excluded and you voluntarily enroll in time of use C. You will get bill protection for 12 months at that premise. Okay, so if you are currently on a time of use rate plan, and you, this is as of October 2020, if you're on a time of use rate plan, one of our other ones, and you change to TOUC, you are not considered eligible for bill protection because you're already on a time of use rate plan. And if you are a new customer, you do not get time of, you do not get the time of use, um, C bill protection either because there's no prior history to base your bill protection off of.
Okay, so bill for protection is only for those people who elect to do it that are not new customers?
Yes. You have to be on E1, you have to have service right now or at some point in the future, and you're on E1, and you transition to that, or you are part of the transition, which means you are on E1 as well. Now, this is a quick look at the 90-day comparison and what that looks like, um, in terms of the costs. So you could see here, it very clearly identifies three rate plans for the customer, gives them an estimated annual figure. Uh, you have, E1 is always your first one. TOUC, the transition rate plan, always in the middle, and then an alternate TOU rate plan on the end. Uh, and in this case, this example highlights that $700 in year annually is the estimated cost showing that TOUC is the lowest cost. It gives customers the information as to how do they take action and what's going to happen. So it's, it's pretty clear with simple instructions. There's also a reply card that's going to be part of this 90-day, uh, notification that customers, if they choose to, it's just another channel that they can take action. They can tear it off, it's postage-paid. They can, um, elect whatever, um, rate plan they want, sign it, send it back, and that will be what they'll get. So just a different option available to them to take action. One being online, two being the automated system allows them to decline it, speaking to a representative, going to a local office, putting in a business reply card. Any one of those things will allow you to take action. Now financially, which I think, as I said, is most important to most of the customers, right? Uh, overall, this gives you a representation of how SCP's territory is expected to perform. 95% of the population is expected to benefit by moving to this rate plan right now. So I would encourage you, you don't need to wait until 2021 to make a rate change. You could do this today, and you can start reaping the benefits. You just go online, as I said, call into the contact center, run that rate comparison, see what the best rate plan is before you get on it. You're just saving money and doing nothing. Um, this is looking at the last 12 months of how customers use energy. You could see over to the left, um, of the, the chart is that those customers are saving money. Um, over to the right, customers are spending more. Okay, and again, there is bill protection. And this is a breakdown of the figures right here. So what you see is that 38% of customers, um, are showing neutral, which is $10 or less a year change. And then non-benefitters being 5%, 57% actually saving money. And you can consider the 38% neutral, if they made any kind of effort to change the way they use their energy, they could actually become winners as well.
So the, the, uh, orange color is?
On the histogram? Yeah. That's CARE and FARA, um, customers. So just pinpoints that you can see that in relation, the, um, performance isn't much different than somebody who's not on CARE or FARA. So that just, just highlighting, these are your financially assisted customers overall. And just represents that they essentially perform the same.
So if you voluntarily, um, contact whatever and, and say, "I want a time of use, um, rate structure now", you don't get that one-year risk-free thing?
You do.
You do?
You do get it.
On the time that you say?
Yes. The new rule will not go into effect until October 2020. So as of right now, anybody, even if you're on time of use, you can sign up for time of use C and get 12-month bill protection. Once you hit October 2020, if you are a brand-new customer with no prior usage at that premise, or you're on time of use already, you will not get bill protection. So that's why I said, don't wait, just do it now. Just figure, let's figure it out and see if it's a saver for you. And if it is, let's get you some extra money. Uh, one of the other reasons why time of use transition is occurring is again, um, for the environment. So we talked a little bit about this. Uh, greenhouse gases, it, reductions will occur as well. It's not a significant impact, but every bit does help. Uh, and looking at the total PG&E population, which is actually about 45%, this is a bun, in terms of, um, bundled customers, just PG&E, uh, in comparison to our CCA customers, they're about 55% of our territory. So we actually don't procure most of the energy for our customers. Our customers, um, for residential, that is, are mostly procured by our CCAs. Uh, and so they're the ones getting that energy for them. Uh, bless you. Now, when thinking about it right now, this is represented about 50% then. Um, if, just with customers moving to time of use transition, it's equivalent to about 1,000 to 2,000 gas-powered cars off the road annually. Doesn't seem like a lot, but when you double that and consider our whole population, it really is about, it could be 2,000 to 4,000. So it's just, every bit does make a difference.
The CCAs are going to have an equally, um, big impact of reducing their.
Yeah, so that's why we figure it would be about double. This is only considering PG&E's, um, service territory of bundled customers, not including the CCA customers. And so you could consider it being about, likely we would expect doubling the reduction.
People don't know, CCA, Community Choice Aggregate, Sonoma Clean Power is the CCA for our area.
Yes. There are 12 of them in Northern California. Uh, and, uh, Sonoma Clean Power is the one for this area. So, uh, why are, why did Sonoma Clean Power decide to participate? Uh, really kind of become in alignment with PG&E. They know we have to move forward with this anyways. They know that it's a good thing for their customers. You guys are just naturally structural winners, not even having to do anything overall. So it makes sense. Why not let customers know they have rate choices and they can, they can change, um, their rate plans if they choose to? We have, as I said, 12 CCAs in PG&E's territory. Uh, as of today, this number has changed. We now have 11 of the 12 CCAs have all agreed to participate, understanding that this is, uh, something good for customers. So making sure that they're aware they have rate choices. And it just, it also ensures that we have a consistent customer experience. So if PG&E is transitioning customers and the Sonoma Clean Power customers were not being transitioned, it could be a confusing experience, inconsistent messaging. But most importantly, they wouldn't be necessarily receiving those benefits of the cost savings quickly. Okay, now, I would, um, like to just play a commercial for you that you're probably going to see in the future. This is part of the statewide campaign. This, um, as I said, California Public Utility Commission is doing this campaign. So you're, they are, um, helping to support the transition, and this is one of those efforts. So I will hopefully roll this footage here, one second.
And would we have access to your presentation that we could put on our website?
Yeah, you can use this presentation right now.
Okay. Those folks out there, they can...
To Simone, I leave the Van Gogh. To Harrison, the wine collection. Grace, you get the beach house. Just don't leave the lights on, okay? To Mateo, my favorite chair. To Chris, the family recipes. To Greg, this rock. To Jamie Webb, let's just say he enjoyed the ride. The redwoods to the redheads, the rainbows to the proud, the almonds to alter, the beaches to the bums, and the fog to Willits. Carl, I leave these things to my heirs, all 39 million of you, on one condition, that you do everything in your power to preserve and protect them. With love, California.
Okay, that is it. So if I leave you with anything today, the important thing is to remember is that, one, you have rate options, two, you don't have to make a change today, go online, it's simple and easy, and we're partnering with Sonoma Clean Power to ensure that it's the best thing for our mutual customers.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
This all seems very positive. Has PG&E heard the negative response from rate payers about the Time of Use plan?
I would say the only thing that we've seen that's negative is that customers typically don't like things happening to them without them pushing it forward. So the fact that it is a transition, that they have to take action to not be included, that is the one negative piece that we're seeing. Also, that's probably the most prominent, is they have to do something not to be a part of it. It is easy to take action, but it's still actually required. And then, two, for those, that small percentage of customers that won't be a benefitter, they don't want to be put on something that's not going to benefit them. So that makes sense as well.
Any other questions?
Well, just that it seems like in the valley, when it gets more hot in the summer, when, or air conditioning is just going to spike that electrical usage, that they're not going to benefit at all, but they're all part of this whole transition, right?
Yes, that's why it's important to, one, exclude the financial assisted customers, and then, two, to make sure that if they are going to be impacted greatly, that they get that outbound call so that we can ensure that they're aware of what that potential impact could be. They do get that bill protection component, so that it does give them the opportunity to try it out, see if they can shift their usage conserve a bit, and make it a winner for them. But they could still decline it as well.
Oh, I just wanted also to say, I think, for me anyway, the environmental component of this is very important, that the reliability of the grid, but part of that is that when you have peaks, you have to use a lot more fossil fuels to meet that peak demand. And so if we're trying to lower our carbon footprint and warm the climate, that's where we want to really cut down on that peak usage to make it much more, not just affordable, but more environmentally positive.
Any other questions up here?
One more. Should commercial accounts expect a transition plan coming?
Yes, they should. It's a little bit different. It's not an optional transition. Customers currently, non-residential customers, have new rate plans available to them. As of November 1st, there is, so of this year, so just this past month, November 1st, new rates were rolled out for commercial and industrial. As of March 1st, 2020, there will be new agricultural rate plans available as well. Each of those rate plans has a 12-month optional early enrollment. If you should choose to elect that, you can make that change right then. If you do not change, as of November 1st, you will automatically be transitioned into those new rate plans for commercial and industrial, and then March 2021 for the agricultural. But keep in mind, it's a little bit different for non-res. In those situations, those customers are used to Time of Use. That's what they have today inherently, like, most of them are Time of Use customers. So it's just a little bit of a difference in terms of where that peak period is at, and the pricing of what that looks like. And customers are actually expected mostly to benefit from those rates as well, so over across the full territory. So you're going to see, really, people are more winners. Like they said, 99% more customers are either neutral or winners on the new commercial and ag rates that are to come.
So will the commercial peak rate still be the 4 to 9?
Commercial is, yes, it is moving towards that direction of the 4 p.m. to 9 p.m.
So I can see how, for example, a restaurant would be a loser, whereas a daytime business might be a winner.
Correct. And there is a different, there are different Time of Use rate plans that they have a choice to enroll in as well. One being where you could see the offset of the peak period to the off-peak is less or more great. So if you are somebody who's using a lot of energy during the peak time, like maybe a restaurant, like you said, then you probably want to go with the one that's not heavily, I mean, you could go with the peak period, depending on your operating hours, that is a much greater peak price, but throughout all the rest of the time of the day and night, if you're a business that's open 24 hours...
So spread it out.
You could off, yeah, you offset that. So there's different plans based on what your operating needs are to make sure that you're not being so negatively impacted.
Any other questions up here? And thank you, Serena, for asking that. I was going to ask about commercials, so thank you for getting that. So can you do me a favor? Can you leave your card with the...
I do not have a card because I typically don't speak to customers most of the time.
Oh, okay.
I do not have a card for you. But I, my information is with Stephanie.
Okay.
And so...
We know where to find her.
Yep, and my, yep, absolutely.
And then we will try and put this on our website to get the word out. I know I've been to some meetings where the PUC folks have been there talking about this, and it's a come-in, so I think the more well-informed our consumers are, the better.
Yes, definitely want to get the awareness out that they don't have to wait.
One last card, anybody from out here in the audience want to ask her any questions? Otherwise, I think we're...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, guys. Be careful heading home.
Yes, thank you all.
All right, now we are at item 3D. Notice public hearing possible action adopting a resolution noticing the city's intent to prepare a groundwater management plan for the Little Lake Basin in conformance with Water Code 1070, Secretary, I guess, AB 330, statute 1992, as required by Proposition 1 funding for the groundwater project. Andrea.
Andrea Trincato Slater, project manager. Back in August, council adopted a resolution to prepare a groundwater management plan. The plan is being required by Proposition 1 funding, which will pay for the next phase of the groundwater system upgrades. Tonight's public hearing is the initial step in notifying the public that the city plans to begin work on the plan. And the city has contracted with Laco Associates to prepare the plan. Rebecca Dolsky and Jordan Blau of Laco are here to provide more information on the plan and the public outreach process.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jordan Blau with Laco Associates. This is my colleague Rebecca Dolsky. As Andrea mentioned, so council's familiar with this groundwater project. Funding was applied for in the spring of this year, and that funding process has kind of progressed, and the final submittal happened in September of this year, which has sort of started the clock to begin this groundwater management planning process as a condition of receiving that grant funding. This hearing represents sort of the formal adoption that's mandated by the statute that dictates these groundwater management plans and how they're put together by local jurisdictions like the city. So Laco is going to be leading the project from a technical perspective and also doing the public outreach process, which Rebecca will talk a little bit more about.
Sure. Keep it brief, you know, it's getting late. Basically, I'll just give you a brief overview of our approach to this and a general schedule so that you know what to plan for in the upcoming months. So right now, we're starting with a public outreach plan. This is really the formalized kickoff of the whole development process. And so the outreach plan, we'll be working with Andrea and other, whoever else, who's looking to be Dusty, to figure out the best way to contact everyone in the valley, because there are people who provide water, there are people that use water, there are people that may want to provide water in the future, people that have a stake in different aspects of groundwater. We're also looking at the way surface water diversions may potentially impact groundwater in the future. So sort of thinking about who needs to be involved, the best way to impact them. And part of the mandated water code says to, we'll keep a list of interested persons and update them on all of the timelines and deliverables and whatnot. And the outreach plan, we'll have a draft that we'll work on in the next week with the city to figure out, you know, what to start with, who do we need to talk to first to get involved now. And then the next steps will be two public workshops to just sit down and listen to the public, essentially. And the first one, we're hoping to slate for sometime in early February, the holidays, so it's kind of going to depend on people's schedules. But that one will be to inform the interested stakeholders, the regulatory requirements, what's required to be in the code, in the plan, and we'll have Rod Wilburn, our principal engineer, there to sort of go through what that looks like on paper. And then it's really going to be to listen to people's concerns, issues, thoughts, maybe people know specific places to get information that we aren't covered to at the moment. And then following that public workshop, we'll have better focus for the plan and prepare a draft. And then the second workshop, we're hoping to have in the spring, early spring sometime. And so before that workshop, we'll have a draft of the plan for public review. We're hoping, you know, a couple weeks before, to give people time to review it, think about it, and then come to the workshop, and we'll sit down and really go through the content of the plan, what seems to be working, what needs to be focused on a little more, if there's information missing, all of that. And then following that draft is revisions to it, additions, changes, another public draft for review and comment, which will receive via email. Right now, it's set up as the engineering email address, and we'll work on that, how to get that information, how to get comments from people. After this meeting, anyone can send an email, give a phone call, and that'll come to us to start thinking about what we need to focus on. And then we need to have the final approved draft to Department of Water Resources by September of next year, because that was the official, it's one year from the official application submittal date, which was September this year. So we have until September, where our plan is to be before you again in August with a plan to adopt. So I think, yeah, that's the general timeline, what it'll look like from an overview perspective, the details of, you know, more of the content and the focus of the information will come out at the first public workshop, where we have Rod there, and we'll have our hydrogeologist there, and hopefully we can, you know, have a little bit more information on what it will look like in practice. This is what it'll look like from your perspective and what you need to be aware of. Yeah, we're available for any comments, questions.
So when you say that, although, I guess if someone from the public at either that workshop or whatever, we have some sort of link on our website that it would go to you guys as opposed to coming to one of us, or that then gets forwarded to you, how will you...
Yeah, we're still working out the logistics, but as of right now, at least in the public notice, it was the engineering, Willits, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But so right now, if something came in, it would be sent to us. We're thinking maybe some type of link or a webpage maybe on the city website would be, that's where drafts could be posted potentially, and an area for comments, and public workshop notices and all of that, and we can do that.
Okay. Anybody else have a...
No.
Nope.
I'm ready to make the motion to approve.
So actually, we...
We don't, we don't.
Yeah.
Well, we do.
Yeah. So at this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and if anybody from the public would like to speak onto this. Okay, at this point, I will close the public hearing, since I see no one. Now I'm going to entertain a motion.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve.
A second?
All right, motion second for the resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Reverend Yous?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you very much, and I'm sure we're going to be hearing back.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
I think I remember you from, you grew up here, right?
I did, yeah. I was born and raised, I grew up on the old school.
Heather, your mom, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so...
I actually went to high school, like, the old school, so both native, so we got some locals working on that.
Yeah, I'm thinking, going, I think I know these kids, so. All right, thank you very much.
That's why you both look so familiar.
Yeah. All right. Item F. Discussion and possible approval of cost-of-living increase for solid waste of Willits for 2020 to be effective January 2020, which includes increases pursuant to solid waste of Willits' contract with the city, along with a surcharge of $1.50 per ton of solid waste fund programs and services. The Meniscino Solid Waste Management Authority, Emswa, provides to member agencies an approval of amended solid waste management. So...
Yes, Stephanie Garbrandt, City...
Wait, did we skip E?
Oh, did I skip E?
Oh.
Oh, I did, I apologize. Sorry about that.
You did.
Notice a public hearing discussion and possible adoption of the 2019-2027 update to the city's general plan. Thank you, everybody.
Drake, I'm used to you there early.
Well, we got a lot more folks, so.
Yeah, we're going to have to take it short.
Okay, I will, actually. Thank you. That's right. Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. Good evening, councilmembers. Dusty Dooley, community development director for the city of Willits. Housing element is back in front. You may recall that this matter was before you, back at your August 28 meeting, where you approved the draft housing element and gave authority to staff to go ahead and submit our draft housing element to the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, for certification. Staff did follow up on that authorization. We had some discussions with HCD staff upon reviewing our draft housing element, and they did have a number of comments to us and request revisions to complete to our previous draft. Those revisions are relatively minor, although certainly important to make sure that we have a housing element that's consistent with state law. Those individual revisions are identified within your staff report, and the actual revised language is found in the memo to HCD, which is attachment B of your agenda packet. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you have about those revisions, but I won't go automatically over them individually. I do also need to note, there's a few just minor corrections that I want to just quickly go over. These are just a little, few clarification items. On page 22 of the housing element, they're quantified objectives. It talks about the planning period being the next five years. It's actually eight years. So the good news is, if we are successful in adopting the housing element tonight, we're going to have a certified housing element that will not need to be updated till 2027, August 15. A few other just minor clarification items, and I'm just stating these for the record, and I'm going quick here, but certainly, you can ask me if you have questions. HNA 24, it references that we included non-vacant sites in our sites inventory. That's not the case. That was something we were able to do under the previous housing element update. We cannot do that typically under current regulations. And all of the, all of the sites that we use in our land use inventory are actually vacant sites. And so to be consistent, we need to change up some of the language on HNA 24. Just off some of the looks I'm getting, let me just briefly re-explain that one of the very important exercises that we go through with the housing element is ensuring that we have adequate sites, inventory, adequate land that's zoned correctly to support a wide range of housing for all income groups. That's, sites inventory is found as appendix B of your, of the housing element. It lists a number of parcels. The good news is, and let me back up, that land use inventory is there to show that we meet our RENA numbers. These are the numbers that are allocated by the state to the city to show that we're creating opportunities to accommodate our fair share of growth for California. On page HNA 30, it talks about single-family residents being permitted in the R3 zone, our multifamily residential zoning. That needs to be updated because we actually preclude development of single-family homes in our R3, our multifamily housing zoning, without obtaining a use permit. The reason is, we want to retain that land for multifamily housing. In fact, if we hadn't done some of the work we did on the last housing element and changed the zoning to allow for... of the work we did on the last housing element, and changed the zoning to allow for multifamily in our R2 district, we would be sitting here, noncompliant with meeting our RENA numbers and trying to figure out how to rezone land potentially against property owners' wills. So I'm very happy to report that we're, due to some good decisions, in my mind, by the council in previous years, we've created an easier pathway for us for this element. Finally, on page B1, Appendix B, the sites inventory, and I want to thank councilmember Strong for pointing this out to staff. But the vacant sites, numbers 22 through 25, is showing the incorrect general plan designation. It's not RS, it's RL, which is residential low density. And also, just for clarification, we'll have to go ahead and revise the sites inventory map. That's also part of Appendix B to reflect that change. And I just want to note, what you see as the, on the map for the sites inventory, it is simply identifying the lands that we identify in the sites inventory. So it's not trying to actually show all the residential land within the city, rather the vacant residential zone land that we include in our sites inventory for the purpose of showing compliance with meeting our RENA numbers. And it's broken up into residential, suburban, low density, and medium density, and those are actually, reflect our general plan designations that we have. And we do have a letter from H C D stating that if we do adopt the housing element and its current makeup tonight, that we can expect to be certified shortly. So what we're looking for tonight is adoption of the housing element by the city council, and upon having a signed resolution by the mayor, we'll be able to send that on to the state and move on to the next important matter.
And that'll be with the corrections you stated, right?
Correct.
All right, any questions to Dusty?
Are you sure you don't want to spend more time on this?
We did good with the housing element. Job well done, and we still got a lot of work to do on the general plan. But we'll have the safety element in front of you next. Didn't have a little bit anxious to work on something else yet. Thanks.
All right. Aren't any other questions?
Yeah. When I first got elected, we talked a lot about zoning, and we talked about this housing element. I'm really glad that this is done. Good job. When are we going to go back to the discussion of cleaning up some of our zoning? For example, we know that we have opportunities in our community if we did some rezoning for housing. When do you see in the future that we would be able to dig into that a little deeper so that we can open up some opportunities for new housing development?
Yeah, no, I'm happy that you have that on your mind, because I think that's an important task that the city needs to take on, and something, you know, this council has recognized for a number of years. You know, right now, we did receive some funding to do, to study expanding the city limits. So there's a lot of land that the county has zoned for residential purposes that mainly isn't being developed and realized as actual housing because of the lack of water and sewer infrastructure in that area. And this is the area south of Adela that I spoke to the council a handful of times before. So there is a focus on looking at matching up that land with city services so that we can create an abundance of housing opportunities. Beyond that, there's still a need to look at a comprehensive review of not only our entire zoning code, that really hasn't had a comprehensive update since the early 80s, as far as I can tell. And as part of that, we would look at the existing zoning within the city limits. It certainly is an exercise that would take considerable staff time. And as far as answering your question, you know, it's just a matter of where we want to put it in the priority of our workload. And I think we have a goal-setting exercise that we'll be going through in the coming months, and that would be a good opportunity, maybe, to see where that task lies amongst the priorities for the city. As our city manager always says, we can do everything, we can do anything, we just can't do everything.
I just know that I keep hearing from members of the community, and recently had a long conversation with the school superintendent about that 10, 11 acres of property that's sitting right in the middle of the Willet city limits, and there's been very little movement on that project. It's 10 acres with a potential of 11. But the point is, is that what can we do as a council to, as policymakers, to ensure that those properties and others that were zoning them properly are, I'm looking for advice from you on what we can do better to move those types, not that specific project, but those types of projects along in our community that could need potential housing.
Well, that project is moving along. In fact, that's an active project that we have, that the school district proposed to rezone a property that's zoned industrial, but they're looking to rezone it to residential purposes. And that matter will be before the council, so, you know, make sure you retain your right to vote on that. Right now, that project, it's been, Mr. Westerberg has been made aware that we need to do an archaeological study and a traffic study to comply with CEQA. And I was on the phone with the archaeologists, actually, today, and talked to Mark yesterday. So that project is moving forward as it should, and we hope to have those studies completed and complete initial study and get that in front of you sooner than later.
What about other areas in our community, whether it be down by the high school, or let's say over Margie's land? She decided at one point that she had some, I'm just giving you a scenario. Is there something we should be doing zoning-wise to?
Yeah, I think it's what you just said. I think we need to take a comprehensive look at our land use map that shows the entire zoning for the city. For instance, you know, even beyond just residential, you've got the old hospital property that's, you know, and a lot of land that's around it that's designated for like, commercial office and sort of support service for a hospital that's not there anymore. So that might be an opportunity to rezone to other commercial or residential uses, recognizing it's, you know, it's in the center of the city, it's proximity to the services, including the schools. You have a plethora of residential, single-family neighborhoods that's zoned commercial. Not quite sure what the story is on that, but that might be an opportunity to look for residential. And then when you're going through that exercise, you know, you might create an opportunity for any individual property owner to present some type of zoning change to match up with some use that they want to do. And maybe that becomes an opportunity to look at all those individual applications in a comprehensive way as well, while we're initiating that full pump, you know, zoning for the city. So that would be a good strategy for, you know, probably recognizing some additional opportunities for residential uses. But again, it's.
I just want to jump in. We are looking at doing goal setting on the second meeting in January, which I believe is on January 22nd. Mark that on your calendar. And for the members of the public and people who are interested in this, I think a very important part of that discussion is going to be, what is on Dusty's plate? And so this is your opportunity to arrange those things and decide how to prioritize what you would like to see first. And really, that's going to be a great opportunity to kind of see what's on his plate now, and move things around and make sure things are have their proper priorities.
So if this was a priority, would this all land, or would it mostly land on your plate? Would this be something that we would be looking to somebody from the outside and need a grant to pay for? I guess I'm looking for other answers as well.
Yeah, I think you hit on probably the two most likely scenarios. It's either happening in-house with staff, and certainly the community development department would play a major role in that exercise. The other idea is, I think, recognizing that there may be limited funding available for us to use general fund dollars to pay a consultant group to go through that exercise. And it wouldn't be on the cheap end necessarily. I don't have a number for you, but, you know, we would try to look for grant funding to pay for that. But I would say that right now, we're in the grant management world. A lot of our time right now is spent on RFPs, getting consultants going on a number of projects. And just like that report stated when we came in front of the council a number of months ago, we want to be real careful about taking on additional grants at the moment. So I think, as our city manager alluded to, it'll be important for us to recognize what current direction we have in workload for staff, and then sort of figure out what the next priorities are going to be. Just don't want to spread ourselves too thin.
So even if we had a grant for a consultant, that would still put undue burden on your department?
I would make that argument, yeah. But I think we can hopefully get a good picture of that in January.
I mean, just like this housing element was an enormous lift for staff, and I really congratulate you for getting this done. We've been behind for a long time. Most cities are. We are now with the, ahead of the curve, and we are now eligible for funding and all sorts of good things. And it was something that was, even though we had a consultant working on it, it took an enormous amount of time from staff working with the consultant to get it right, and to really get it fitting with Willets. And really appreciate the work staff put into that.
And Dusty, didn't you mention to me that you've already seen benefits of being this far along with the housing element?
Yeah, we received, we've already received $160,000 from the state through SB2 funds, which we're going to be looking at using towards creating additional housing opportunities by matching up city services with county land. And if we hadn't done this, we wouldn't have gotten that. We would have automatically not been eligible.
I know this has been something that's hard to do with all the distractions you've had, and so, good job.
Thanks, yeah. Happy to do it.
Any other questions to Dusty? At this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Any from the public that would like to speak to this? Jeez, nobody wants to speak. All right. Closing the public hearing. At this point, I would bring it back up here and entertain a motion.
I would move the recommended action with the changes that Dusty outlined.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Speaking of my Suprema, all right. Dolores?
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yay!
Yes.
Mayor.
Yep. All right. Now, Jerry, discussion possible approval of the cost of living increase for solid waste of Willets.
Um, yes, Stephanie Gerbrandt, Sierra City Manager. I also wanted to point out that this is actually a two-part issue, and Mr. Ward is here to discuss the rate increase that he is asking for, that is pursuant to the contract that the city has with solid waste of Willets. We are also asking council to approve our joint powers agreement with E M S W A. We are the last agency to approve that joint powers agreement, and so that sort of lays the foundation for this going forward with the E M S W A being able to continue as the board intended. And so I would like to invite Mr. Ward to come and discuss the rate increase.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Jerry Ward, solid waste of Willets. This is an annual, increasingly currently go through every year, and previously to city manager, current city managers, the last few years, the city managers approved it, because it is something that can be approved by a city manager. But it's nice to come before the council and discuss this anyway. The rates that are before you are the rate adjustments that are in the letter to you do include the $1.50 increase in the surcharge that Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority is proposing. So we assumed that it would go through because all the other jurisdictions approved it as well. And without the $1.50 increase, Councilmember Strong knows that E M S W A would probably go away. And it is an important function of the county right now for the recycling opportunities, as well as the housesways collection program. So that is something that we took the liberty to add into our rate adjustment, but I think it was important. Again, cost of living has been fairly low. I think the cost of living prop component of this rate adjustment was only 1.7%, which is fairly decent. The cost of fuel unfortunately keeps going up. That was about a half a percent. Then we have a pass-through adjustment for the E M S W A surcharge, as well as our increase to landfill. We have a cost of living increase at Petra Hills landfill every year, which is pretty good, considering that other landfills are going up a lot more than the cost of living. We were very fortunate to sign a long-term contract with that landfill with just cost of living increases. And we still have a contract that's good until, I think, 2045. So we're in good shape there. And of course, the last part of the component is the recycling commodity composite market value, as we all read in the paper and watching China, they eliminated, taking a lot of the material unless it's like 1% contamination-free. And of course, none of us can really meet that, although our material is real clean. And if anybody's seen our bales, we have a good reputation with the brokers we deal with. But unfortunately, the composite market value went from $98 a ton down to 89. And I believe it's still going down. I just saw a check for a newspaper that we used to get, oh, $1,500 for a load, which is about 32 bales. The check was a whole $109. So at least we're not paying to get rid of it yet. Some communities are doing, but, and that's only because we have a clean product. But that's our last component. And we hopeful, we're hopeful that as fuel goes down, rates go down. As commodity market value goes up, rates go down. So it's unfortunate, we have to continue to raise the rates, but it is important that we continue these programs. We don't want to discontinue many services we provide for recycling, like the three through seven plastics and paper. It would be really easy to just come to the council and say, we're losing a lot of money on this. We need to, we could save money by scraping it, but that's not the intent of this program. We are mandated by the state of California to divert 50% of the waste stream. And Councilmember Strong and I talked about maybe getting together and figure out how we are doing with the city of Willets on that. I know a lot of communities are having a very difficult time meeting it because of the market value of these materials that we're collecting. Again, coming back even to the buyback recycling centers. There's only three in Mendocino County now. We operate two of them. For the last 18 months, I think, over 900 buyback recycling centers have closed in the state of California. And of course, Cal recycle is sitting on their hands, not doing anything about it. It's very unfortunate, people going to Safeway and the other stores and paying their nickel for that bottle and can, but they can't take it anywhere else to redeem it. So the state just, they've got over a billion dollars in their fund, and I don't know what they're using it for. I just can't wait to see a class action lawsuit against the state for something like that right now. And I keep saying that, but nothing comes of it. But it's very unfortunate for people living in the areas outside of Fort Bragg and Willets who have the only buybacks, they can't redeem their product. Of course, they can put it in their blue can. We get part of that CRV, but that's not getting it back into their pocket. So anyway, it's a real mess in the recycling field within the state of California. Hopefully, something will change. I don't see any other countries bailing us out in the short term. China is not going to come back. There are, we are, some of our brokers are taking stuff to Asian countries, but they know they don't have to pay what China used to pay, because there's no competition. So saying all that, I don't mean to be bleak, but we will continue to process your materials, the materials that we collect, try to get the highest value for them. And I think we're doing a good service out there. It is a difficult day in and day out, running trucks with any trucking outfit, but I'm very proud of the crew that we have, and they do an excellent job for the city, as well as the L A areas that we collect from.
So I'm here to ask if there are any questions.
Jerry, I got one question, just mostly for our TV audience. So the typical smaller gray can.
The 20-gallon cart?
Yeah, what they're paying here, yeah, thank you.
I think it goes up, the 35-gallon cart goes up $1.07. I think the 20-gallon is less than $1.
60 cents.
60 cents. So mostly just for the public there, that it's not like you're coming in raising the rate five.
No, I believe we're the, I know we're the cheapest rates in the county. Possibly, Ukiah might have us beat, but I think they just went through a major increase in their rates, because they're now having to subsidize the landfill, closure of their landfill finally. And I think their rates are higher than Willets. We might be the lowest in the county now.
Okay.
Not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying that we're trying to keep a control of our costs.
Brendan, go ahead.
So I just have one question. I got a little bit of grief.
I got a little bit of grief from a couple of residents who are big gardeners. And as you know, a few months back, we.
What did we do?
reduced the green waste pickup. And now we're telling them the rates are going to go up. And yes, cost of living, and it happens every year. Is there anything that we can say to those residents? You lost a little bit of service and now it's going up.
Well, yeah. I don't know if those residents, are they, they don't have enough volume to deal with it, or?
They, they have so much volume that having pickup every two weeks on their green waste isn't cutting it for them.
Yeah. Because we do offer additional carts if they need to. That's about all we can really.
Is there a limit on the number of green cans they can have?
Well, I've not seen a customer in the years we've been providing the service and spent 15 years exceed three carts, needing three carts.
But they can have up to three?
But they can have three.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, this is not factored in, but I think city manager knows we negotiated a contract with Coal Creek Compost a few years ago to take in the green waste as well as the food waste. Well, that contract does go up every year. In fact, in January 1, Coal Creek Compost has got a cost of living increase as well. So the cost of green waste is going up because of the supply where the composting facility is also increasing their rates. And I'm sure they'll be going up even further because of the mandates set by the state in the future.
But that's already built into?
Well, that's already built in, but I didn't really factor in the cost of living for the, for Coal Creek. But that'll, we'll deal with next year. It was only, went from $36 to $36.80 or something like that. But anyway, the cost of providing that service is, even for composting, is going up.
Okay.
So I, I feel for them. There is, it is, it is cheaper in the long run if we can go every other week because we can pick up recycling one week and then the green waste the next.
Yeah. And no, I still think it was the right decision. I just wanted some.
Brooktrails really wanted us to provide green waste up in Brooktrails, but to cover 60 miles of, of territory every other week or weekly just didn't pencil out. So we're allowing them to bring in a cubic yard a month for free if they bring in a billing card. So that's one way of dealing with it.
And customers don't have to pay anything extra for the green bin pickup and the blue recycling?
No, it's all included in the garbage.
That's all included. So really, it's based on?
Some, some communities now are charging a recycling fee for their blue card. And I don't really, I don't want people to feel like they got to pay to have their recycling taken in. They're really paying, but they're paying through the garbage rate, so they don't know that's what they're paying. It's hard to bring it up, but it's typically what other communities do, and I just didn't like that idea. People, I'm giving you all this stuff that's worth tons of money and you're still charging me for recycling? So anyway. Thank you, though, and appreciate your support. And of course, if any, if there's any problems, and obviously I don't get too many, Stephanie can vouch for that, I don't get a lot of calls. But if you do, poor those residents that had complained, maybe had a little issue with the green, haven't called me. I explained it to them.
Thank you.
Well, one other thought about on the green waste, don't the commercial customers get the option of having a weekly collection? I don't know if it's on for the green.
We, the commercials using carts go every other week. If they've got a dumpster, which very few of them have a dumpster, would go on a, on call basis.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, most of them are carts. That's where you might see a senior housing or something, they might have six or seven carts because of the volume they have. But they're dealing with multi-units.
Yeah.
Well, good thing, that was a good thing. I had some people ask me too, and I kind of explained to them, I said, you know, we were trying to hold costs down, not only, if we can hold your cost down, we will hold the consumers' cost down.
About that carbon footprint, dude. Driving through the city all the time.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I'll tell you, a lot of people, they complained, and we probably didn't care about that. They were more concerned about the bill or the inconvenience. But it's important, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So up here, do we have anybody that, is there any other questions, other ways?
No, I think, I think just acknowledging your struggle to find a qualified workforce is a challenge, and you've received some criticism. Just want to show some respect for that, as many other businesses are struggling to find a qualified workforce or a workforce that can find housing is, is a struggle here. And that I personally am pleased with the, the level of professionalism and the extra effort of the, the drivers who serviced in, in my neighborhood.
Well, thank you.
That's your mile that they'll go if the can sometimes isn't in the right spot, that we'll pull it out for you or that sort of, there are, there are little extras.
It's nice seeing local kids come back, but sometimes they don't come back. And when they get to come back, they don't want to be a garbage man.
What I want to point out, that I have seen Jerry out there on those rides.
I've been out there too. I still have my Class B license, but I might have to give it up and getting old and can't pass these thing. High blood, blood pressure test.
You might use this opportunity to let the public know that you're hiring.
Yeah, I'm looking, we're hiring, yes. It has been difficult, mainly because we're in the DOT, Department of Transportation, or with the drug testing and whatnot. And it's very, very tough. Especially when you have medical marijuana everywhere, too. It's unfortunate, it may be legal in California, it's not legal from our drug testing program, so. But anyway, we'll keep looking and we are be able to hire the cream of the crop because we do provide the benefit, as always. So we want to continue that.
Thank you.
But thank you for those comments, that makes me feel good.
Well, why don't we hear from the public?
Yeah. Anybody from the public like to speak to this? All right. And now procedurally, I guess I'll bring it back up here. Stephanie, do we need two motions or one?
Oh, just one motion.
Okay.
For both items?
I believe we can.
I think you could do it either way. You could have a single motion approving both, or if you want to have some separation and clarity about each.
How about we do two?
Okay.
Motion on the rate increase.
Well, I will move, but I also, I just wanted to make a comment, too, that I did talk to Jerry, and at the last ENSWA, the solid waste management meeting, we had some really interesting presentations about trying to reduce the waste stream in general, and in particular, the diversion of stuff from, so that less goes to the landfill. And I want to have a meeting with Jerry and maybe someone from the ENSWA and from the zero waste people that are promoting that. And then maybe have, at a future city council meeting, have a presentation about how we as a city, we as customers and residents can, can reduce our waste stream.
I think that's important because overall, we get graded on this, don't we, Jerry?
Yeah.
There's some required, and we don't really have very good data either. And Jerry sends data to ENSWA that goes to the state recycling agency, and we never really get feedback about how we're doing. And I, and I do think we could get a lot better buy-in if people understood it better, kind of got educated about, more about what their options are and how to reduce the trash that goes into the trash. And Jerry and I, and the city staff, we could explore whether there's some ways we can help promote the, what's available. So that'll be in the future.
So you had a motion?
Yeah, so the motion is for the rate increase as proposed here.
I'll second.
Right. Any other discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Looking for another motion?
I'll make a second motion to approve the, the new joint powers agreement that was included in our packet. And yeah, I'll make a comment after a second.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right.
Just the comment, and I think Stephanie put it in her staff report very, very clearly, that the county took the whole waste management, they used to contribute about $100,000 a year to the solid waste management board authority to handle the county's solid waste oversight. And the county took that in-house, so they're not contributing as much to the agency anymore. That was one of the reasons for the $1.50 increase on the, on the tipping fees. And at the same time, they were really looking at the fact that our joint powers agreement was, I think, dated 1990, something like that. It was very out of date and wasn't really reflecting the current tasks that the authority was taking on. And I think the new draft kind of clears that up, and it does allow both the option that we are now doing, which is to have staff handle the ENSWA's solid waste, or the household wastes and.
Household?
Hazardous waste, tire amnesty programs, cleanup of the illegal dumps, all sorts of, and a lot of the recycling programs. So it's being done in-house, basically, by our own staff. But the, the joint powers agreement is written so that if we decided that that wasn't working anymore, we could contract out for that service. And I, I'm really glad we're doing it in-house, but I just wanted to point out that the joint powers agreement gives us that flexibility.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All right. Call for it.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Jerry. All right. We don't have any enactment of ordinances, and it looks like the one item on the consent calendar was pulled by our city clerk.
Maybe a five-minute break. Maybe not, I don't. Maybe, maybe the rest is fine.
Here, let's take a five-minute break. Yeah, take care. Five minutes, I'm not leaving, so you go.
Okay, five minutes.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. So item six, information reports, those are out there for the public, they want to see them. When our packet's right to appeal, persons who are satisfied with decision city council may have the right to a review of that decision by the court. The city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged.
Didn't we decide that that could go down at the bottom?
Yes. I apologize, that is supposed to be down at the bottom, and so it's not supposed to be in our regular agenda.
Sounds very familiar.
I know. So, thank you.
We'll get it right next time. We don't have to redo.
We meet as the planning commission and the successor agency, and there's no business there, so city manager reports and recommendations.
Okay, I have one item along with some informational issues. Stephanie Gerbrandt, City Manager. Council asks that staff come back with a, a report regarding the monthly stipend given to council members. This report discusses Government Code Section 36516.2A, discussing how much a general law city may pay its council members. That limit for a city of our size is $300 per month. Before last February, the city of Willets paid each council member $100 per month and $200 to the mayor. In February, the city of Willets voted to increase that stipend to $200 a month for all members of the city council. And this is before you today. If you would like to make a change in that, I did not prepare a resolution. I'm going to wait until we get some direction, and then I will prepare a resolution if needed for the following council meeting to be put on the consent calendar.
Madge, I think you were the proponent, so do you want to say something first before?
Well, yeah, I just have noticed that when we made that decision to increase our stipend to 200, we thought our budget was looking really good. And at the very least, that it was going to be, you know, not, not much of an impact. This is a very small amount of money, so it doesn't really help balance our budget particularly. But it's, I think, a symbolic thing, that if, if our budget is really as stressed out as it is in the book, in the red, that it, it feels not right for us to have given ourselves even a small little raise. We do get a health benefit, which is very valuable. So I don't know how much exactly that's costing the city, but that health benefit certainly is, is a monetary and benefit to all of council members. So I, I just feel like in a period where our budget is so under stress and we are not breaking even at all, that I would feel much more comfortable that we get a stipend of 100 a month. And then I still think that the mayor does extra work and should get 200 a month. So that's what I would propose, but I only care for others.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Larry? Okay, go ahead.
I think that $200 is really reasonable for us with all the work that we have to do and the things and the transportation that we take and do, all the things that are in Ukiah. And I feel that $200 is a minimum price for what we do, and that's my feeling about it. But one thing I can say, Madge, if, if the money bothers you, you can give the money back personally.
On that question, Jim, how does that work? I did that once at the school district, and because it was basically a resolution, I basically got, basically I got paid, then I had to physically write a check back.
You had to, or you, you left and do that?
That's what they told me there at the time.
I don't have any experience with that, but I, I would imagine you can write a check back if that's what.
Well, I mean, is it, can you have one council member that takes another one dozen? Or?
I don't see why not.
It's possible that they make a charitable donation to, to like Music in the Park or something like that.
Sure.
All right. Suprema, do you have anything?
No, I thought quite a bit about this, actually. At first, I was like, $100 really doesn't matter, but then I thought about what it might mean to the next person who runs for city council. And I got some feedback from some people who said, hey, my work, if I had to take time off work to attend meetings, that could, that could support more people being, having the opportunity to run for a public office. And for that reason, I would say that I think the stipend should stay. And then also, I think it's important that the public also acknowledges how much we give up of our own personal privacy to be on the council. Yes, we do get insurance, but we give up a lot of privacy. We work really hard. We don't even have an office. We have, we have to meet people at the, well, we meet them at the local grocery store, but you have to go to Brick House and other places just to hold public meetings. We drive places all the time on our own time. I know that I've never submitted a mileage request for any meeting that I've ever attended. And so $200 plus health insurance is actually pretty meager. I think it's pretty unvaluable. It, we've, we've shown that we are, by our pay, we've also demonstrated that we don't provide a valuable service. It would be the equivalent of asking any of the, the staff here to say that we don't want to pay them, or we want to pay them a lower wage. In essence, they want to be paid with their work. We're already underpaid, frankly, in my opinion, for what we give to this community, the number of hours. You can sit on this council and you can do very little and just come to meetings, maybe meet with people once in a while. But if you really want to do a good job up here, you can spend up to 40 hours a week. Probably most of us spend an average of 10 hours a week, just on average, in doing our job here. That's 40 hours a month. What's your time worth? If you take that and you figure out what you pay for your insurance premium, what's paid for your insurance premiums and what your stipend is, what is your hourly rate? I mean, it's really not that much. So that's just my thought. But for me, I'll go either way with what the council wants.
Did you have anything to add?
You know, I voted no on the raise initially because it was my first week that I was up here, and it seemed kind of outlandish to vote myself a raise. In the year now that I've been up here, I will tell you that this job has taken way more of my effort and energy and has made me a lightning rod for people who have never even talked to me before. And I'm happy to take $200 a month for that.
Oh, it changes, huh?
Yep.
I guess I get the last word. You know what? I, I see all the different points there, and, and obviously, as mayor, I'm going to get the 200s, so it, it. so it feels kind of weird saying, I'll cut yours, but whatever. I'd be content if Stephanie will cause it to happen to cut mine in half and send it to Music in the Park. And I've got to figure, look for something, and that would be me. And I don't think I would be looking at, you know, I think everybody here I know puts in the time that Sabrina's talking about. I get calls all the time and like you said, I kind of tell people I have a virtual office. You know, send me an email, call me that number, and I actually get the message and I call people back, so. But that's kind of where I'm at, is that, what, virtual office? Come on. So I think that's where I'll be, that if we can cause that to happen.
So if you want to give a donation, we could just keep it as it is and then if you want to, anybody who wants to kick some dollars to some.
As long as I don't have to write a check, if it can come out of my payroll deduction, I'll do that.
We would not set up for that.
Not?
But I can talk to June about how we can figure out.
That's what I'd like to do, but I don't want to get into the mechanics of that and so.
Wasn't your point really though, Madge, about giving back to the, to the general fund? Because we know that, for example, Music in the Park.
It's all donations.
It's already breaking even, so there isn't really a benefit.
Yeah, it was about trying to make a more of a symbolic dent in the general fund.
Although it's a nice gesture.
And I am willing to make some donations, especially since it is tax deductible too, you know, with that extra $100 that I am getting, because I can afford to do that and I do that already, but I haven't been doing it to the city general fund, but I could direct some of it. And given what I'm hearing, I don't think there needs to be a motion that won't pass anyway. But I do think we should keep our mindful of the, I just, I guess, the way it looks to be paid more. Back in February, it looked fine. Right now, it doesn't look so fine.
No, and I share your concerns. I would probably have not voted for it, you know, I kind of got the impression because I myself don't put in for mileage and I just kind of looked at the money I get as.
As mileage money?
Yeah, when I drive to Sacramento or I drive to Point Arena or whatever, I just kind of figure, I mean, I see the value in the health insurance, so I kind of look at it that way.
You have to kind of think about the next person, though. We've got an election coming up next year and how that could potentially open doors for those people as well.
Well, I also look at it that this is not, this is not a static sort of thing. It's something that next year, we can sit back up here and have that conversation or whoever's here in these seats can have that conversation. So if folks want to run, I'll tell you, when you run it, you know, just from sitting back there in the back watching all the work that prior council members have done, I knew what I was getting into and that it wasn't just, you know, a couple hours every other Wednesday. It was a lot of other work that came with it. And I've served on other boards and same thing, I mean, it wasn't just going there. So when I was on the school district, I basically turned in my stipend and.
There was no stipend when I was there.
Yeah, I did.
I just did it for free.
Because of the budget kind of issue. And I see where Madge is going with this because if, you know, whether it's a deal where we go into negotiations and, you know, there is nothing to, basically our pot is empty when it comes to dealing with our staff or we have to cut things or whatever, I, honestly, the extra 100 that it would be doesn't necessarily, to me, yeah, it's not going to break the bank, but it's also, like, if I got to ask people to walk in my shoes, I want them to walk in my shoes, so. All right, I'll talk to June about what best works for that.
So off of that, Jerry, if we get in a situation where we have to do some across-the-board cutting, then I think it would be worth having this discussion again. And maybe it's more than the $100 stipend, maybe it's something more, but I think that that discussion should take place.
Well, that's kind of what I was going with this.
That's what I figured you were really going to do.
Yeah, so I think at this point, as we move forward, then, and again, the next time the council, you know, the next council that meets after the elections next year, they can, they can look at it.
That'll be there.
I just also wanted to mention that I, and I guess at least one or two other council members, are eligible for Medicare, but because the city is the primary insurer for health, I can't arrange it where Medicare is the primary and the city's policy is to fill in, like, the secondary. If that were possible, I think it would actually save a bit of money for those council members who are eligible, but it was apparently not very feasible to do. Just something to look into.
Okay.
I think I talked to Karen about it at one point.
I had a couple more things.
Oh, yeah.
On the screen behind you, I wanted to give a shout-out to a young man by the name of Evan Crandall. He was an Eagle Scout, prospective Eagle Scout, who was looking through the city for a project to do. I wish I had taken a before picture because these cages are behind the Public Works Building and what they do is when animal control comes and picks up animals, like on weekends and nights, they need a place to hold them until they get picked up to the shelter. And so we had some really terrible cages in back of our Public Works Building. It didn't have a roof, it didn't have sides, it was kind of all torn apart, the ground was really muddy. He and his team, they came and met with me, they did a project plan, they did a timeline, they did a budget, they came out on a weekend and they really did an outstanding job.
They just put the roof on there?
They put the roof, they put the side, they repaired the gate, they actually put a light on the solar-operated gate, they put gravel down and then used a vibrator to make it almost, it's almost like cement all the way from the driveway to there, so there's no mud whatsoever. They cleared all the vegetation, because there was a lot of overgrowth vegetation. Took them all, took them all weekend, a team, and I was just, the Public Works Crew that, you know, we conceived this project, I think they outdid themselves and they did a really good job, and I just wanted to shout out. It's going to be a lot nicer because we would feel really bad for the dogs, they didn't have a shelter, they didn't have a roof, the sun would shine, would beat down on them from the sides and it was, so it's.
I want to point out, this is what the original cages were, we got those from animal control.
Oh, little tiny thing.
And they basically gave them to us and a lot of times we had to kind of keep the dogs over at the PD. And I had this installed here, but they didn't put the walls in.
Yeah, it looks not nice.
Yeah.
And over the years, it had really degraded.
And the doggies were donated too by, I'm trying to think of, I'm not sure if it's the folks that do the rescue or whatever, but they donated the doggies to us.
So I just.
Was there somebody who helped the boys find this need? I mean, how did this need get identified?
So they came to us and said, what could we do? They had an idea for, they had a couple of different ideas, and this had been in city staff's mind, this bothers us a lot, the fact that dogs are sort of suffering back there. And so we sort of showed them a few different sites and things that they could do and they went back and then they came back with, I said, come back with a plan. And so they came back with a plan and.
And do you have other projects like this, other Eagle Scout potentially?
We have actually a history of.
Good to know.
And doing plans.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, my son did Boy Scout Hut, put all new windows and weather stripping and everything.
This last time?
This, no, in '78.
Yeah, so there's been a history of.
Yeah, I've done my share of painting.
And I just want to point out that in a flood year, sometimes this area floods.
Oh, it's awful, yeah.
So it's just, it's the proximity of the creek, so it.
So they, and that's why they loaded it up with gravel and then got a machine to grind the gravel into the ground so that it's almost like concrete, so it shouldn't get very muddy again.
But it's, so it's a couple inches above the rest.
Yeah.
How often are there dogs in there?
That's a good question. Suzanne would probably be a better person to answer because you are there.
We're the ones that take the dogs.
Oh, you're the ones to do.
Yes, and we take them down there, we hate to. We have another part of the PD and if they're going to come right away, we have never wanted to take them there, but sometimes we have to. So it's probably two, three times a week up to that.
That's why if you have a tag on your doggy, you know.
Microchip.
It gets them to you.
Microchip, that's the way.
Yeah. Couple other things, our Christmas luncheon is next week on the 19th. That is a staff luncheon and city council is invited. Normally we have this catered, this time we are cooking our own. We are buying turkeys and cooking it and so we're going to be bringing side dishes and it's going to be a lot of fun, so we look forward to seeing the council there and all the staff members there. That's at noon on the 19th next week. We had our city managers, our big meeting within Mendocino County, we have a lunch every two weeks, we also have a phone call and we try to keep up on everything that's going on. That's, we've been talking about ambulance services. Also, we talked a little bit about Measure B because the assistant city manager in Ukiah is actually on the Measure B Committee and she has let us know that the supervisors will be considering a resolution soon that will, that we hope will pass, that will say that local jurisdictions, that the supervisors, before they cite any residential facility or any Measure B facility within a city, that the supervisors do consider the local jurisdictions and adhere to all of the regulations and permitting within that jurisdiction before they go forward. And we do hope that the supervisors look at that. Kathy's not here this week, but I want to thank Dolores for being here. And the last thing is we have a, our first dispensary opened for medical cannabis. It opened yesterday and to, it was, it was a big lift to get them there and they did open. Members of staff came and welcomed them. I know that our HR director and I, we stopped by shortly after 4:00 PM yesterday, approximately 20 minutes after 4:00. It was very nice. And that is all.
All right. Department recommendations. Tewa, let's get through the amend fiscal year 2019 capital improvement project budget in the amount of $66,749 and authorize city manager to execute and approve construction change orders for the additional amount not to exceed $36,000 and adopt a resolution accepting the construction completion, North Maple Street Improvement and Storm Drain Replacement Project.
Who?
About.
You good?
Go for it.
Okay. Hi, good evening. Suzanne, I'm the Assistant in the Mayor for the City. I am here tonight to ask for your approval to allow the city manager and staff to execute the necessary documents to call the North Maple Street project complete, as well as ask that the city manager has authorization for additional construction change orders not to exceed $36,000 and to amend the budget, as Jerry said, to basically even out all the budget stuff underneath, all the dollars. The reason for the change orders, we had two things of significance. Basically, we found a massive clay layer underneath the road once it was ground down and putting new AC over that was just not the responsible thing to do. So a lot of extra area had to be dug out and base material and big cobble rock had to be put in, as well as fabric, to stabilize the ground before it was paved. And also, part of the change order is about, I think, something like $16,000 additional to pay for the water line portion of the work.
Sabrina, we shouldn't have to worry about the water line in the future there, right?
No. Are there any questions?
Questions up here?
I motion, I say, I want to say that I think it's a really good fix for this, for the rest of Maple Street, and I make a motion that we accept this.
I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second. And any further discussion? I'm going to see if there's anybody in the public that wants to go there. Yeah, I know, it's kind of moot, but any further discussion up here? Anybody in the public? Okay, Gary now, calling for the vote.
Councilmember Farnie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stratsky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
That was a nice project, it looks really nice.
Thank you.
I have talked to residents before about other stuff there, the road, the sewer, and it's because it's a small stretch there that it's, you know, being able to kind of, again, combine these projects and take care of a lot of problems at once is, it saves what small cities have to do, but it's, it was the right thing to do. So, thank you. All right. And item B, consider resolution approving contract for professional services with ADP LLC for city's payroll services.
It's my turn. I'm probably the last one. Usually do financial directors, city treasurer for the Willets. We're going to discuss possible, prove the contract for ADP LLC to processing payroll services. And as we might already know, our payroll clerk, payroll accountant, actually retired in fact in May of this year. And we had this discussion internally and what we're going to do and after she retired. So I think before I even come on board, the city already contacted the city of Ukiah and other means to maybe just outsourcing the payroll services. And the city of Ukiah was really on board with that option and gave us a quote at that point in time is $22,158 annual fee plus $24,222, that's a one-time setup fee. At that point in time, when she, when the accountant retired, we're paying her salaries and benefits around $100,000 a year. So that was an amazing deal, you know, when we got the budget and limited time position and did now, we only budget about this one-time setup fee and annual fee for $35,000 because it's already made up time. So that's what we did in the annual budget process. And now, past six months, and there's a lot of struggling because the Ukayas have a more advanced accounting system, we have really aging ones, so the general ledger, it would not upload to our accounting system. That's why a lot of our financial report, I can't even produce to the senior staff like monthly because I don't have payroll numbers. So that was a struggling. And now, since then, I'm thinking about what we can do. So I contacted city of Ukiah about how we can solve this, you know, this problem. And for them, they were, they were saying they had to have one set aside personnel, actually specific manually to do that every month or every payroll, to have that done. Their system won't automatically produce that type of report we can upload in our accounting system. So that means the cost will go up in that case. So I said, well, you know, we're already struggling with our budget, I'm looking for other options. So I also contacted ADP. ADP, I had experience with them, with when I worked in City of Vista and also with small profit, nonprofit companies, my prior career. So they've been really advanced to building the program to fit in your system. So I talked with them and told them what is our opticals right now and what we're trying to accomplish with our timeline. Gladly, they give us very nice quote right here. It's a first year, actually, this is, I need to revise this a little writing here, it's a first year fee is $10,039.05, which includes $77.55 for the annual payrolls processing. And for CalPERS report, it's a $1,000 setup fee one time and plus annual for $12,84, which is $107 a month. And those fees, they don't charge us like as we're processing every payroll, so it's not like one time we have to pay one of them. So that's a plus. Compared that number with the city of Ukiah's number, I was like, yeah, we got a great deal. Now we cut like the one. Now we cut like the one, two-thirds of the expenses. So that's where I bring this, but it still is over $39.5 above city managers' authorized limits. So by the, our financial policies and anything about $10,000 non-construction related, we give it back to the city council. Meanwhile, that's why I'm here to present this contract so in the hope city council will approve the contracts. Any questions?
Go ahead, then I have one.
Okay. So I'm trying to understand this. So you're stating that the $7,755 is included in the $10,039?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. And then the $2,284 is on top of?
No, it's included.
So both of those numbers are included in this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the $7,755 is come with, they have like, we do 24, 26 payrolls per year. They have a base fee, like a $61 for the base fee. And the plot they charge per employee like $4.10 per employee. With the city right now, this number comes with 55 employees. We don't even have 55 right now. So we have 49 employees.
Forty-eight, yes.
Yeah, 49 employees. So a little bit of increase, a little bit just in case we run, you know, we get more people to come in. So there's a room for it, for this $7,755. That's $61.75 times 26 pay period plus the $4.10 times 55 employee and times 26 pay period. And plus there was W2 and 1099 for, it's for W2, for all employee for the year end. You know, you get about the taxes. That's $286. All this number together total is $7,755. This is on the exhibit, this breaking down on the exhibit A, I don't have a page number, but there was details on there. Yeah. So that's one.
So the total cost of payroll services would be the $10,039?
Yeah, for 12 months.
For 12 months?
For the first 12 months. And next year is only the $7,755 plus 1284.
Okay.
So $5,000 less.
So, but we're still going to have the, let's see, ongoing costs. We're still going to have 20 hours of cost related to, to other positions. What is the, what's the true cost of the finance directors and the HR's time for those 20 hours? Because really that's what it's costing.
Well, processing payroll regardless is going to cost in time, company staff time. Even right now with the city of Ukiah's, what we do when the senior accountant retired is the human resource analyst was Karen and she is gathering all the time sheet manually and review those and make sure the lease key is all correctly, probably works. Because they're in odd schedules than just regular, you know, we do an hour day, one hour day. So they're odd schedule, make sure all of those are filled correctly and everybody correct record their, you know, the sick time, vacation time. So that's her time, just regular ongoing base right now to review those. For me, my time on this is, I budget it because new system come in, you know, with city of Ukiah right now, my accounting department would have to upload payroll, your general ledger, right? So those, when I get a GL, I'm going to upload in the system for accounting system, also for the Calpers website. That's my accounting department. By month end, I have to reconcile everything, make sure, you know, all the withholding and it's same as what we pick out, you know, that kind of thing. Those are ongoing. Anybody processing payroll have to do this.
So if we had an in-house accounting, what is it called?
Senior account physician.
The physician that retired?
Yes, it was a senior account physician. And that's, that's about, with the salary benefit, it's about $100,000 a year.
Okay. I guess what I'm trying to figure out, so that I can justify my online, is what is the actual savings?
I think I know what you're getting at. And so let me just, let me just answer that the staff time required to assist payroll will not change with the system. There always has to be a, an amount of time in gathering all of this information. So no matter what payroll system you use, whether it's external or internal, there is going to be about 10 hours of time per week. General, just with all of us, because I have to sign time sheets, she's got a time sheet, we have to check it, we have to review those things. That is just internal, built in. We are going to be doing that.
Yeah, with me and...
It's not an, it's not an additional amount?
Because of me, I actually carries wheel on the, wheel exempt. So you're not even paying me state here doing those work pretty much. Because I don't pay by overtime, anything hours outside.
Bonus are exempt. There will be a little bit of extra time because ADP is very automated and it's all computer-based. I think all employees are going to spend a little bit more time doing their time sheets. Because right now, they sort of do them by hand. They don't always do a great job. Karen has to sort of follow behind them and check them and correct them. Now that they will be doing, people, employees will be doing their own time sheets, which is really standard in the industry. They can't, they won't let you make mistakes. It'll shoot it back and say, try again.
I think that part is good. I want to make sure that for the public that's coming, that I've heard from, that it says, why are we outsourcing? I want to be able to have a logical argument as to why we're outsourcing this position.
Mainly it's because right now, one of the things, payroll accountants is very specific with the Calpers system and that we have so much, and the unions, also two unions, one is IBW, one is the PLA. They are, we have a union contract. They have a law more, law item, other than regular pay, overtime pay. They have a shift differential, they have FTO, they have ICO, they have all sorts of things added on. Normally, we, it take about starts fresh to formulate with all those process of what should go with what. And accounting wise, it will take about at least for a year just to know it, to really get good at it. I would say at least two and a half years to get it. To hire a payroll accountant right now with a salary wait offer, we're not in the market on that one.
And so...
So this is probably is the, you know, we're outsourcing out, but we're still doing it. Another side is actually save cities money.
And to just jump on that, so the state of the art right now is because payroll is so complicated in a public agency, we were doing everything manually, which is very not cost-effective. It is state-of-the-art to have a computer do all those things. And ADP has those components to have it mechanized and it's all, it's not only is it not by hand, which allows for a lot of mistakes to happen when one human does all the computations. It's also much faster for a computer to do it. Our current finance system cannot handle it, a public payroll. If we ever update our public, our finance system, we will be able to bring it back in-house. But it will be an automated system and not a manual system.
Right. Because right now you would file like a state report to the California, for IRS, all those like prepare report. It is all manual before we access to, you know, Ukiah or...
I think you've made a logical argument that I can understand. Thank you.
It was a lot of work.
Greta has a question.
Yes.
I don't have a question. I'd like to move to accept the recommended action so long as the resolution is amended to say that the $10,039.05 is the first year fee and it will reduce in subsequent years because of the lack of the one-time.
Yeah, reduce $1,000, yeah, for next year.
I second that. All right. Any further discussion?
My only question, it just seems like, how can they possibly do it for that cheap? And I think the answer is because it's completely automated. But it does mean that we're going to have to train all of our personnel to fill out their cards in such a way that... So there will be an adjustment internally. But if they can do it for that, yes.
I do have one question. I apologize. I meant to call you and I didn't. So we obviously lost the one-time setup fee with Ukiah, right? Because we paid them and we did do...
That's still in the negotiation right now. And another news I tried to break it out maybe later, but I guess I just mentioned now. Our senior accountant, although actually resigned because went to, she's going to go to city of Ukiah. So, yes. So I will use that excuse actually to tell them you're not processing payroll because you stole my people. And I don't know about to do this. Yeah. So we're still negotiating the fee right now and, but we don't, we don't know the number.
Oh, okay. So we might get some of that back.
Yes.
Because I'm assuming if you guys said, hey, we could do this, like, okay. And then it sounds like they were having difficulties.
Yeah, that's another reason. The general ledger is never done.
And then the annual fee, I'm assuming we paid fiscally, so we paid half of that already and maybe...
No, we haven't paid any.
We haven't paid.
Oh, okay. So I guess that would be my only concern. The other one is that with this automated system, would the opportunity be there for the employees to have like a web app so they can submit their time? Because I know sometimes the issue with the police department is sometimes tracking people down to home saying, you didn't turn in your payroll. And I know that some cities have it where you can submit your stuff.
Well, there's two, especially we talked about in PD, and they always get called out maybe middle of the night to go on the shift, snow day. So they have to log in. There's two ways. One is you really come to the city hall and, you know, to, close to where you primary, primary promise to log in because there's a geo scope in there. Another way is give the dispatcher the right to go in there. If the officer being called out, dispatcher actually, or the supervisor can be logging for them at that location.
All right. That was, that will, I figure you guys could deal with that part of it.
Oh, yes, yes.
All right. Again, anybody from the public? Nope. Okay. Bring it back up here.
Yeah.
There's somebody... Yeah, I know. So, call for the vote.
Councilmember Conni?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes. Thank you, June. Do you have anything else as long as you're up here?
Yes, I just don't go back, sit down and come back here. I'm just going to stay here. I really appreciate city calling, mentioning, and then two things to stack in, number 200 bucks. But I think my thing is, I think the city biggest asset actually is the personnel. And that people is the biggest asset for the city. So we, like me, I lost my senior accountant. So that may, that give bring, our police department lost a lot of, you know, officers during the year to turnover. So we don't have a continuity in here. And that which caused a lot of things to get delayed because you had to train a new people. And so I think what I'm trying to make a point is, the people is the big asset for the city. So don't worry about 200 bucks, you know, as long as we can retain the good employees in the city, that's part where I go. That's my comment on it. Thank you.
Fire chief?
I just want to say that the, we've officially submitted a full set of plans to the building department with an application to build our new firehouse. That's a big step for us. So that process is moving forward. I know that there's been a lot of talk from the public of what's happening over there. It actually is moving forward. It's just a painstakingly slow pace. But we'll see that pace pick up now that we have the plan submitted. We've been told four to six weeks. That meets, that we'll be able to meet our deadline to get RFPs out for construction in early February. And that's where we're at. Anyway, that's all. It's exciting news for us on that end.
And can I just confirm that our ad hoc meeting is at 10:30 on Monday?
Correct.
Police chief?
I was told I shouldn't address my retirement. I have 40 years in the retirement system. I've been 12 years at the police department. Love working here, the best place I've ever worked. I've had some terrible things, I've been through some terrible things in my life. Trying to get the Spark Twain quote right. Some that actually happened. So as you know, I had a medical issue, a severe medical issue, and it makes me see things in a different light. So I have a different perspective. And I had planned on staying here the five-year contract, but three, to move on with my life. And a lot of people ask me, and I'm happy to say this out loud, a lot of people that know me contacted me and were concerned that I was leaving because of my health. I am leaving because of my health. My health is excellent. And I want to be able to work out more. My wife wants me to do more projects at home. I did mention that in the press release. So I hate to go, but it's time. Thank you.
Dusty, do you have anything else?
So I'm happy to say that the community development department is extremely busy. We have lots of work to do. Whether it's Chris and his 400-pound submittal of a plan check, if it's code enforcement, it's issuing building permit, it's writing technical documents for current planning projects, including housing projects, or long-range planning efforts that the council is aware of. Not to mention just the day-to-day interactions with the public, whether they're stopping by or phone calls or the incredible amount of emails that we get, which is all good things. When those things are happening, that's a good sign for the city, I think. We have, very proud of the incredible staff at the community development department. I love how they enjoy helping the public, working with each other. Everyone works at a great pace. We get an amazing amount of work done daily. You can tell that everyone's brain is tired when they leave. And as, so, you know. So those are all good things. We are starting to fall behind on some of our plan checks. I'm falling behind on some of my writing doozies. So are my colleagues. And I'm trying to figure out how to catch back up. For me personally, when I'm writing technical documents, when I'm having to use critical thinking skills, I become highly inefficient when I'm available to the public and can be interrupted every five minutes. You know, I need a good 15, 20 minutes. I kind of compare it to, you know, being in college, a lot of times I couldn't do my work with, in the house with 12 roommates. I went to the library and I could get my work done. And so the idea is to try to set some, some office hours for the department so that we can get some uninterrupted time to work on, on some of these important documents that'll, that'll help move the city forward. And so, you know, recognizing that we do get a lot of traffic in the morning hours, recognizing that our brains are kind of more tired towards the end of the day and that's where we tend to get into more like email responses, making sure to return phone calls in a timely fashion. What I'm proposing is that we establish hours where we're close to the public typically. Obviously, we'll need to make exceptions, but from 11:00 to 2:00, Monday through Thursday, we'd like to be able to shut the door and be working diligently at our computers and getting some of these, catching up on some of these projects. And it's looking like we're going to continue to get an increased load. So I'm not even proposing this as like some sort of temporary deal. I mean, we might fine tune it if we can. We certainly want to make sure that we're providing the best customer service we can. But we've got to balance that out with being able to actually get work done. Because if we get in a situation where we're telling Chris, we can't get to your project for two months, that's going to kind of erode it. I think what seems like a positive reputation that we're gaining here in Willets. You know, obviously becomes important to let the public know about that. So we'd like to post those office hours on our website. We'll add it to our signature line on, when we respond to emails. So it'll have your phone number and office hours on there. We'll certainly post flyers around city hall. We're going to send out, you know, an email blast to all the regular folks that we know come in and whose emails we have to alert them. But we'll do our best to get the word out. Also, if we have somebody who drives up from Bakersfield to submit a permit and has to go back, you know, we'll, we'll make an exception and certainly make sure to take care of them. Also, if someone has a job and the only time they could come in is at noon, obviously, we'll, we'll make an exception and be sure to meet with them. So it's not necessarily a hard rule, but I honestly got to say that we can't keep up with our workload and process things in a timely fashion unless I'm able to find some additional uninterrupted time for myself and for the other folks in the community development department. So I'm kind of just up here letting you know that that's what I'd like to do, is set office hours so that we're unavailable from 11:00 to 2:00 typically.
And we've been talking about this for a year. I've asked that he do that.
Well, you mentioned just now that you would be accommodating in those circumstances. That would be there because you're in a...
That would be there because you're in the heaven. It sounds like you answered it, so I would support it. Because we, obviously, will have a shopping list when we do our goal setting. I want to make sure you can get to our goals and you can educate us as to what you're working on, et cetera, and so.
Is there somebody who will be the gatekeeper for that period of time to keep you from, you know, to only allow those unusual exceptions?
Great. So the door is going to be closed at the bottom of the stairs leading up to the community development department, and we'll have a sign posted there. And they'll also say, we'll have our cards, so if anyone's always welcome to call us and make an appointment so that they're, you know, sure that we'll actually be there when they show up, because we're often in meetings or here and there. But I spoke to support staff downstairs, and, you know, they have the ability to sort of make that call of when to call us up and say, hey, we've got one of those exceptions, and can you please come down? In talking to staff, you know, there's an opportunity, you know, if they need to talk to me, I can come downstairs and maybe meet in the conference room or something like that. That way, my conversation isn't bothering my colleagues as they're trying to get some critical writing done during that time and catch up on it.
You used to have a person this last year that was sitting outside your office door that was taking questions or comments when you were busy or that sort of thing. Has that person moved to a different role?
Yes.
In a different department?
Yeah. And it actually, it continues to be a distraction even if someone comes upstairs and then talks to a person.
Because you can hear them.
This close to where we are. And, you know, and it's sort of like, well, Dusty's, he's busy right now. Well, I just need to talk to him for five minutes, you know. Oh, he knows me. And so it wasn't sufficient enough from my perspective to simply have someone sitting at that desk and sort of being that buffer and, you know, just being able to close your office door or something like that. You know, and talking to staff a little bit more today, it's clear that we all agree that really it's keeping that door closed downstairs and really making sure to buffer ourselves away. I'm open to other ideas, but that's.
And we're going to start that on Monday.
We, we could. We also thought it might be good to sort of get the word out there first and then maybe look at starting this at the new year.
Is your office open to the public on Fridays?
No. Although, again, if someone can only meet on Fridays, you know, we'll take the time to accommodate them. But right now, that really is our only, you know, direct time is on Fridays, and I have to say that's by far our most productive day. But for me, it's my most productive day as far as catching up on writing assignments.
Have you considered possibly doing another day, full day, where you're close to the public, and then having three full days where the public can have access to the whole? I mean, 11 to 2, I just think as a working person, if you're trying to get out on your lunch break, that's right then.
Yeah.
And I have total respect for you, and I know how hard you work and how silent your department is, and I don't in any way mean to second guess your plan, which seems, you know, totally reasonable. But one of the things that I hear from the public is lack of access to the city. And so I just worry about the message that that sends to the community who doesn't understand the tremendous amount of work that falls on your department.
Well, and that's always the trade-off, and that's the hesitation even trying to come before you. It just, you know, we tried to avoid this, but, and I have to tell you, and Stephanie, you might know as well, but I don't know of any department where you can go in and talk to the building official or the community development director or, you know, key staff at any point at any time of the day.
That's not.
And typically, it's, you know, you might have limited counter-hours when you're talking to, you know, the entry-level planner, you know, for certain hours out of the day. I know you're still, no matter what we do, you're, you know, you're going to open yourself up to that criticism, but it's a balancing act. You know, I could actually spend all day just talking to people, answering emails and do phone calls.
And those are just mine. My.
I'd like to say.
But, go ahead, please.
No, finish, finish.
No.
Okay. I respect your time, and I know how hard it is to get a project. I'm going to interrupt it all the time. When I first got on the council, we were five days a week, and I recall Ada and the city manager at the time coming to us and saying, hey, we need a full day to work, so we're going to take the Fridays. And it was originally, I was told that it was going to be that every Friday would be that quiet time to process. And I can see how even one day, to be honest, is not sufficient. What about, because I don't want to reduce hours for public access. I already get a lot of heat from the public about the fact that we're not available five, that staff isn't available five days a week. What about some kind of a rotation where at least one person, do you have three people in the planning department?
There's four of us.
Four of you. Would it be possible that you all had a day or two during specific hours where you weren't available, but there would be somebody else there that could receive, or is it because your office space is so close that that?
That's the immediate problem, is that it's not enough for three of us to have our door closed and then one person interacting. It just, it doesn't work. I mean, if somebody's waiting to talk to me and I've already got someone in my office, that person's, you know, chatting it up, or whatever, I mean, it's all fine, it's just...
It's distracting.
Being human, it's, you know, it's enough of a distraction to where we're losing that efficiency that we're trying to get. We're trying to get that just real uninterrupted time. And, you know, having Fridays is a huge help, it's just not quite enough.
It sounds like you've discussed this with your manager, city manager, who manages your time, and the two of you have agreed that this would be a good way of helping you get your tasks completed.
Right.
Yeah. And I think if the public ends up having a snitty fit about it, they would complain to Stephanie, and Stephanie would maybe say, guess what, Dusty, it's not working.
And we can fine tune it. We can try that, and then maybe transition to, you know, adding another day a week and just, you know, being off Thursday or something, or Tuesday and having, you know.
And Dusty's right. In the world out there, usually, the public's access to would be much more limited than is here. I actually was surprised you didn't have office hours, and from the time I was here, I asked that you put them together. So I'm really happy with this change, and I'm looking forward to putting that.
And again, you're right that there's a lot of folks that work and they only think they're off in their own hour, but we'll just meet with those folks, you know. So it's not a hard rule. You know, we recognize there needs to be some flexibility, especially when we first introduced the office hours. I'd like to at least try it.
Thank you, Dusty. Jim, do you have anything?
No, just closed session.
Okay. All right. All right, we're getting close to our 10 o'clock hours, so.
Wait for a minute.
Go ahead.
All right. Just because I mentioned that we have accountants leaving for Ucaya, and I want, as you're aware, we're going to post our position available for accounting department, for finance department for the accounting position. And where this time, we're not looking for anything with any like super fancy resume, no. What I'm looking at is have accounting experience, a bookkeeper experience, a note debt and credits, and, you know, understand how to make general interest, that's all. And also budgets coming. And last year, we have obstacles about write-up, the wrong spellings, grandma's. So I'm also looking at another person to really good with writings, approved readings, so I'm also looking for those persons. So if you guys know anybody and, you know, have those skills, please forward to me. So, yeah, that's the next step.
Are those both full-time or?
One of it's a full-time, another one, we haven't decided.
Right now, we're just looking for one position at Ucaya. We only have one opening.
We only have one opening.
We only have one opening. I thought we had a hiring freeze, but maybe.
But that was for another position that's already frozen?
Yes.
This is actually the position that's.
Replacing a position.
Yeah, the person's leaving, yes.
So city council committee reports, does anybody have anything?
Yes.
Start with her.
I attended the community advisory board meeting, I don't know how many weeks ago now, between now and the last meeting. We are looking at eliminating entry fees to the museum to make the attendance numbers increase. The museum is currently free for anybody, any county resident who holds a library card. This would be opening it up even further. I'll let you know if that happens. I also attended, or I did not attend a Revide Ed meeting, it was postponed until January. And I did attend the MCAG meeting last Monday in Councilman Stransky's place as the alternate. We voted yes on the STIP plan, is that correct, Larry?
Yes.
That was called, okay. And that is the plan for the upcoming projects for the next period of fiscal things.
Supremal?
Yeah. Ad hoc mobile vending committee, we set a date for January 16th at 6 o'clock in council chambers. The city's posted it on their website as well as their Facebook page, event information. An email went out to some business owners, and I believe Madge and I are going to work together the first week of January to go out and hand-deliver notices to all businesses that we can find in Willets. And we'll also put something, a letter to the editor in the newspaper so that.
Thank you.
Everybody has the opportunity to attend. And Madge and I will be meeting prior to that meeting to lay out a framework of how, so we don't get, we are not going in circles. And then today, I had an MTA meeting, and normally I don't have a lot to report, but today I do. Sorry, I know it's a late hour. On the unmet needs continues to be a route from Fort Bragg over to Leightonville in Willets. We're continuing to have this discussion, and like with us, we have budget constraints, and so MTA is trying to be creative in finding ways where we can be more efficient. We've identified some ways where we could be more efficient with overlap with services. Unfortunately, they're connected to senior centers. Not much of any impact at all potentially to the Willet senior center, but could impact the coast and the Fort Bragg senior centers funding, and so we're definitely feeling a kickback from those. Some negative feedback from those too, because they have the possibility of losing funds, but we're also duplicating services. And if we can no longer duplicate services, it might free up some money for things on the unmet needs list. MTA submitted another grant for a 35-foot bus and another cutaway bus, both of them electric buses. We're hoping to find out. We didn't win on the last round, but we're still trying. We talked about electric buses and the whole PG&E outage and how that would impact us. So the state has set a mandate with no funding, saying that by 2030, that public transit has to be 100% electric, no funding. And then also, what happens when PG&E turns out the power? We bring the buses back and we can't recharge. What are we going to do? So we're trying to explore, what size batteries would we even need to accommodate that sort of thing? Are there any special brands out there? We're looking for, to put pressure on the state as an entity about the need for that. Yeah, it's interesting. What will we do? And then also, Dan Jertie, who serves on the MTA board, said that Sonoma Clean Power and PG&E in July 2020 are going to be releasing something to public entities and potentially residential and commercial customers about programs where you can apply for a generator. So we're looking forward to hearing what they come up with between now and July 20th. And some other conversations have been about what we can do to use our solar panels. We would need at least some software so that we could use our solar panels a little bit differently. And so it may not just be about battery packs, it could be about how we utilize our solar panels a little bit differently. So there's lots of ideas that are floating around to try and come up with some solutions. So.
Madge?
So dovetailing a little bit with that, I attended the last Sonoma Clean Power meeting because I'm the alternate and usually the regular guy goes, but this last one was really, really interesting. I wrote up a one-page, very condensed summary of it, which I thought was going to be included in the packet, but it wasn't, and I didn't go and make copies for everybody, but I think it's worth distributing to the council members and maybe including it on the website. I guess I didn't.
I apologize. I didn't realize you needed.
Yeah, I just thought it would really make it easier to make a report. I wouldn't have to say everything.
I apologize.
And I didn't bring my copy of it.
I thought it was for you.
But they are, they are looking at various ways to incentivize and in some places, grant funding or funding where the savings from your bill pays back your initial cost. And I think their emphasis is more, I think it's going to be more on backup batteries and trans, what do you call it? So that you can use solar panels to power your AC system and have a backup battery rather than having everybody go out and buy generators. They're trying to discourage that solution and encourage people, especially those who have solar installations, to be able to go independent of the grid when there's a power outage. So I think I will look into that more and find out how that applies to the city, but it also applies to a lot of our residences and other people that have solar installations. And that full report about the Sonoma Clean Power meeting, they also had a really interesting discussion about some of the things that might happen with PG&E's bankruptcy and kind of what the options are being discussed in Sacramento. The Santa Rosa Press Democrat misinterpreted the discussion in a kind of straw vote, and they reported that Sonoma Clean Power was proposing to buy PG&E's grid for, you know, for that area. That's not what they were in fact discussing. They were discussing that there were some both advantages and concerns about going public with the grid company, having a public entity such as the state buy the grid. And the main concern, I'll try to make this brief, but the main concern was that if urban areas opt out of PG&E, sort of like Ucaya has somewhat done, but if they start to opt out, that leaves an incredible load on all of us rural areas to maintain the grid. And what we need is to make sure we equalize those costs over the whole, the whole system, regionally at least, rather than have a bunch of separate little pockets that then separate out from PG&E. But the whole PG&E situation is very complex and very politically charged, and of course, stuff is going on in Sacramento. There were a bunch of other things like what Sonoma Clean Power is doing meanwhile to try to improve our regional energy usage and to allow customers to take advantage of things. So I will get that report out to our, to our council members, at the very least to them. Two other boards that I'm on, the EDFC yesterday had a local workshop for businesses that want to perhaps get funding from EDFC loans, and they are doing a lot of outreach on that throughout the county. I wasn't able to attend it, I had a conflict, but I will find out tomorrow, because tomorrow EDFC is having another board meeting, 2 o'clock to 4 at the Ucaya office. And there is going to be a presentation at that by Cameo, which stands for the California Association for Micro Enterprise Opportunity. And that's a group that EDFC works with quite a lot to try to fill the needs for microenterprises, which is what we really depend on in our county and certainly in Willets. So I will have more of the report next time. The Solid Waste Management Authority is not meeting this month, but we met last month right after our last meeting. And that was a very interesting meeting, too. We had guests from CNS Waste Solutions, the one that operates out of Ucaya, from the Zero Waste Mendicino, which is a actual, sort of a for-profit organization, but they do an awful lot of nonprofit education about re... an awful lot of nonprofit education about reducing the waste stream, and also from Cal Recycle, the state agency. And this whole issue of reducing waste stream and diverting what we can into recycling and green waste is really problematic, as Jerry Ward was explaining to us also today. But I think it was a very interesting meeting, and I'm looking forward to meeting with Jerry to see what we can do better here in Willets. But it's a big issue countywide and statewide because of the recycling challenges that we're facing. And this was a presentation that the zero-waste people made to us, and I have a couple, I have two extra copies if anybody wants to see. It was more interesting in person, but it's PowerPoint. Anyway, that was very interesting and kind of, I know that Willets Economic Localization wants to get involved in that, promoting that too. So, I think that's all.
I want to thank Graff for taking my spot on MCAG. I was back in, back east in the snow, and I would have rather been at the meeting.
It was short, too, Larry.
Yeah.
Record time.
Well, that's good. I think Larry emphasized we really needed to have a presence there at MCAG.
It was fascinating.
Only thing I had was LAVCO met earlier, the first Monday of the month, and the big issue that's been hanging there is the lady by the name of Lisa Wager represents a bunch of property owners over there in the, I guess it's, I'm trying to think of what the road is that goes out towards the coast from...
Grand School?
No, Ukiah area. I'm trying to think, drawing a map blank, but, oh, I don't look at, Ors Springs, thank you, Ors Springs in that area out there. Apparently, they want to detach, because apparently, a couple miles out, they're in the Mendocino Coast District Hospital District. And most of those folks there say, "Hey, when we go to the ambulance, or when we call for an ambulance, or we call for a, or we want to go to the hospital, we go to Ukiah." And that's where the ambulance is going to take us, Ukiah, because we're closer there. So, they filed for a detachment, which is basically, you know, be like somebody here and wanting to detach from the fire district, saying, "Hey, we're serviced by Ukiah, not Little Lake," or something. And so, we've been going through it, they had to, because they brought it forward to LAVCO, they had to deposit some fees and pay for the staff time to cover this, and they, it's been proceeding through. And then the hospital district, amongst the things they brought up is that it needed to go through CEQA, and that it also, there were some issues. In the end, we postponed them to the, I think it's to the March meeting, because we're waiting on the county to, the LAVCO attorney basically said, "You need to have figures as to what's going to happen with that tax increment. So, even if you detach, you're still responsible for some prior bonds and things from before, but moving forward, they wouldn't be responsible for paying the tax increment there." So, it is, I'm learning a lot from this as far as how you detach from a district, and so that's moving forward.
Is that Anderson Valley area or closer to the...
I'm trying to think, it's Ors Springs, and it kind of jets out there, and it, it's kind of, when you look at the map, you're going...
It's not the end of the county, it goes to...
Goes up to Comche, right?
It goes up to Comche.
Up 128?
No, 128, it's a county border.
Yeah, so...
Where Ukiah High School is, the jail.
Oh, out that way?
No, no, it's north of that.
It's north of that.
Well, apparently, I may be hitting the wrong, but basically, they, when you look at the map, you're like going, "Why did they vote to go into that district?" That's a good reminder for folks when folks are going out and drawing boundaries for districts, that you better pay attention, because I think when this happened years ago, most of the property owners were absentee or big landowners that then subdivided, sold, and all of a sudden, people found themselves in the Mendocino Coast Hospital District. And they obviously are hurting for money, so they don't want the divorce to happen, so to speak, so that's where it's at.
It's very, even Comche.
What's that?
Nothing similar.
And it's on the LAVCO website, and you can read that, so I may be giving the wrong, I didn't bring my notes, so I may be giving the wrong, but it's in that general vicinity, so. All right.
May I, would you please give an announcement about the Measure B meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Larry and I will be attending next Wednesday at 1:00. I think it's going to be here, isn't it?
It's the community side.
From 1:00 to 3:00 here. You know, we've been asking them since they first started meeting to, "Hey, can you take this on the road to different areas?" And Willets being one of them, so I guess I would encourage any Willets residents that want to show up for Measure B.
Wednesday, December what?
Next week, the 18th. The 18th. And they'll be...
It's from 1:00 to 3:00.
Yeah, and it'll be here.
Right here, or if they're where, into the crowds.
So, if people want to come in and speak to the Measure B folks during public comment, that's a good opportunity to come and speak. I know some of our residents have complained that they, you know, it's a little hard to get down to Ukiah for them, so they have something to say one way or the other, so. All right, we have closed session. Conference with labor negotiations pursuant to government code 54957.6. City manager negotiator with the police department, and conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code 54956-9B, anticipated litigation increases. I'll report out if we have something to...